Call this meeting to order for Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty, hereby informing all attendees. That a video and audio recording is being made. If anyone else wishes to record this meeting, they must. Let the chair know. First agenda item, minutes of five twelve and sixty-nine. As in our packet.
Move approval of the minutes of May twelve and June ninth.
I'll second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Conrad.
Hi.
Dan.
Hi.
Dave.
Hi.
Peter.
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Correspondence, that worked out great.
No new correspondence.
As we were able to see it and and not have to read it through right here. I did like that. Few interesting things that you guys see that does this.
Yeah, yes. Long order, yeah.
Yeah, that's a big one. And now they can't do anything because they only have two selectmen, so very interesting.
Repeal too, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I uh, I really like having those correspondence items in advance to think about it ahead of time. Not have you try to summarize, I think it's just kind of unfair to you.
Yeah.
And mostly they're very routine and boring and you know, no, I don't really care if. No, the town of Washington has a special permit mile from our town border. But these were quite interesting and detailed and I was talking with Brooke a little bit before the meeting. I'm wondering if we should expect. In our special permits notice of decision. Notice of decision, whether we should expect to recite the findings that the board has made in the meeting. We have not done that in the past. But Lennox did it notably with great detail at one case that they decided about. Something in the. Traditional in the cottage district. And I I'm thinking I was telling Brooke before the meeting started that. My history is working many years for a board. Overdid it in that way and you know, there were times when the board I worked for when she. Decisions that were a hundred pages and. You wrote everybody crazy up there, but I don't want to do anything like that, but I do think that. If the bylaw requires us to make specific findings before reaching a decision. That we should recite those findings in the order that issue. Does anybody have an opinion about?
We usually do. Somewhat.
Well.
We found finding, we don't identify specifically what findings, so long as they're the normal findings that are in our bylaw. We add additional conditions to the specific.
They are recorded.
Decision.
Yeah.
They are recorded, the findings are recorded.
Yeah, there is.
And Brooke was saying they're all in the minutes.
Oh, have a separate paper of the findings, you mean, or a document?
Just we have to issue a notice of decision.
Yep, and put those in it.
And that would be if somebody wanted to appeal a notice of decision, they would take that to the court and say, here, I'm appealing this. On some grounds. I just think it would be more bulletproof if. Findings that are required in the bylaw are cited in the notice of decision.
That would make, yeah, that would be good.
So I don't know, I don't want to.
Instead of the minute.
It's making a lot of, making a lot of work for.
Oh, we don't mind.
But it's only really copying what she's already written in the minutes, so.
Yes.
Cut and paste. Cut and paste.
Yeah. Okay.
In the best case anyway.
All set with correspondence?
Yes, thank you.
Our next agenda item is public comment. This is a general public comment, it is not having to do with the. Special permit hearing. Okay. So. Kathy Hall. You're up.
I'll unmute myself and. There we are, here I am, so um, for the. Lee Youth Commission, oh, we're so excited because the completion of the. Skateboard Park that addition should be done. This week, if not next week, depending on the weather, so we're very excited for that to happen. And I know you just cut me off about the special permit, the only thing I want to say is. If.
Not now, Kathy.
No, I just have a question, if he has those five findings, can that be at the beginning so people have questions about that? That's all I have to say, thank you.
Cool.
Later.
Okay. Anyone else for public comment? Next up would be the special permit hearing that is posted for six thirty, so we have to. Kill time until then. We'll jump around zoning bylaws, we will jump over that, that's a long discussion, we're up. Berkshire Regional Planning is looking for a delegate. Reappointment.
Willing to serve again.
I will serve again.
Moving to the appointment of Chairman Donovan. As our representative to Berkshire Regional Planning.
Second. Second.
I'll second.
Yeah, no, you can't second. Dan got it. Conrad. Aye. Dan.
Aye.
Dave.
Aye.
Peter.
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Town planners report.
So I sent you all my report from the last. Meeting within the correspondence. I don't necessarily have that much more to update. I have more to talk about zoning bylaws, so I can wait until we start talking about that to go over those specific. Updates. Had a meeting with Yukon last Tuesday to go over brownfields in town, so took them out on driving around town, showing them. Properties specifically the mill sites as well as, you know, other known brownfields in town. That was, that was good and they're getting started with that, so very excited to be working with them.
Are they just identifying or?
They are doing site assessments for the mills. And they are, which is like, what, what's, what can we see with the history of it, what's potential pollution, if there is any, but with mills. Well, we are. What do our bylaws say, what does master plan say, what are some good avenues in the future if this, if the owner of this property is wanting to do something? So.
Have you talked to the owner of the property because they may have done some of their work?
Not yet, and that's kind of why I wanted to, we can talk about that more in the zoning bylaw section. But. Also besides site assessments, primarily during inventory of the entire town. So looking at all historical documents, it's not really on, on foot, you know, testing because they need to get permission from every single property owner. That they have suspicion of a brownfield, they bring a lot more like historical digging and they'll come up with. A list of brown. The thing about brownfields is the definition, as long as you suspect that it's a brownfield, it's a brownfield. So we don't necessarily need testing to prove it's a brownfield, testing helps solidify that. But this site or, you know, townwide inventory will allow us to have a much better understanding of areas in town. That are brownfields and then, you know, if people are selling them or they have questions, there are different avenues for funding as well to make brownfields more attractive and clean them up and things like that. A lot of that is federal dependence, so it's kind of a gray area where we stand right now with. Our brownfield funding, I know Buck could talk about this too with BRPC. But there are other options in the state as well for brownfield funding, so we don't only depend on the federal government, which is why I think this is still a very worthy endeavor. And, you know, eventually there could be funding back in federal brownfield programs as well. So while we have the opportunity to have, you know, assistance with, I mean, this is what Yukon Tab does, they're target assessment of brownfields. They're graduate students, undergraduate students, they faculty members, so come out here, they do site work. And then they do a lot of historical digging and come up with a really good curious list, they work throughout the entire New England area for free. So this was, you know, a grant per se that we were able to get two different projects with them for the site assessments and then the targeted list, the assessment list. Really excited about that.
Thanks, good question.
Absolutely.
I always thought, I never had a very precise idea about what a brownfield is. But my idea was that somebody wants to spill something that's still in the ground that currently it's. Harmful or potentially harmful and you don't want kids running around on top of it and people breathing what comes out of the ground. Digging holes for basements and that's, that's my idea of a brownfield.
What it is, the whole brownfields program, I'm not sure, it's just we've always called it that, probably the original legislation. Was done, it's a revolving account. That. The state has set up for a contaminated site. That you can get a low interest or no interest loan from through Berkshire Regional Handles in our area. So you could get that loan. And eventually pay it back, hopefully, some have defaulted, most have paid it back. And there's, they infuse, the federal government has normally infused these programs with extra money. This year now, so.
So but my, I guess getting around to my question.
Yeah.
So if my, if my understanding of brownfields is roughly correct. It seems to me the way you would go about identifying a brownfield is by digging up some soil and testing it.
Yeah, like I said, technically, if you look at definition of brownfield, could be anything that you suspect to have pollution. For example, there's, you know, the Superfund was a very large, it is one of the largest. Funding pools to be able to clean up, we had a Superfund site in Lee from School Street, there was a house that had a base fill and an oil spill in the basement. By the time they actually cleaned it up, there was no more traces, like when, when they finally removed foundation. All of that, you know, pollution already kind of gone away, so part of identifying a brownfield could be testing. But sometimes things degrade on their own or they travel to a different area and so testing isn't always necessarily accurate in order to identify it as a brownfield. Most of the brownfields are identified under an assumption of pollution of some degree. And some brownfield money is paid or used, spent, I guess, in order to make sure that there's nothing that needs to be remediated. As I answered.
Well, I mean, I guess, I mean, we're assuming that a place is polluted and therefore it's a brownfield and we're not going to test it?
Usually, they will test it, once there's, once the construction process goes forth, like Eagle Mill, there was some brownfields. Money in there, correct? Yes.
Fair.
Yeah.
Where they have phase one and two environmental.
So any, any industrial site, you can almost. Assume that you're going to have to test once, once it starts.
Yeah, we just can't do it for everyone right now.
So, so what the Connecticut people are going to be doing is looking at places that used to be industrial sites, presuming that they're potentially brownfields and then. Doing historical review of records primarily and then perhaps, or perhaps not, any chemical testing of soil.
Yeah, if, if they have enough time and staff and get permission from the landowner to go on and test, they can and they have. It's still kind of fluid right now because we are, we have such a rich history of industry in town. We don't really know how much, I mean, we do, they have a team of about ten people working on this, so we're one of their biggest. Clients, I suppose, this summer, so I mean, it just started off last week, so I can't necessarily tell you the exact name of it yet. We were going to have biweekly check-ins and I could obviously update the board once that process started already along.
Now with the whole P boss thing, that's.
That's another, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Zoning bylaw?
Yeah, so.
We're talking about your mill.
Going, going into that. I haven't yet reached out to the owners of the mills, I do definitely want them here, however, we did receive word that BRPC did get the grant for us from the state. And they should be able to start working with us the end of next month. They will be here in person, able to, you know, hear what's going on and instead of inviting the mill owners to come and talk to us more than once. CJ Hoff and I, CJ asked if you'd be able to just hold off until him and his team could get here, so then that way there's no repeated information or they'd have to watch. You know, recordings but can actually be present in the moment, ask questions as well and understand the whole scope of what we're working with. So that's why we've held off yet, reaching out to mill owners, but as soon as we do, it'll be RBC to start with us, definitely.
And do you have any templates for us to work on yet?
Not yet, I can get them, I can, I can look to see, the best example was the level that I've given. But I can look for other and, you know, that's something to that CJ's team will be able to tease out as well.
And is your SDR? Software up and running?
Software's up and running, we. Finished finalizing the letters last week, we'll be sitting out this week.
And then registrations will begin July one? Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah, we're gonna have, it's gonna be very, very flexible.
All be through you.
Me and, yeah, if, if I'm not in the office, the building administration system will be able to take it, we're duly trained so that way, one of us is.
We decided is Matt going out on inspections of everything, what's the state require?
I, I don't know that answer that question, they require. Different findings based on the type of STR it is, so if it's owner occupied, if it's non-owner occupied. I don't know all the specifics, all the different CMRs that came out. I know, I know enough to be dangerous, but. They are also starting doing those inspections July one.
Okay.
So it's going to be kind of a dual edged sword, you know, two birds, one stone.
You might want to.
This letter identifies one half of the letter is about the registration process and the other half is about the requirements for the building code. So that way people come in, it's not a, oh, I need to do this too, it's showing all of what's expected in order to be compliant with the state.
Okay. Anybody else have anything?
Brooke, you mentioned in your written report that, you know, I think you're applying for a grant for vacant storefronts.
Yeah.
And that there was going to be money available to reactivate those possibly.
If, if we receive the grant, yes, I. I submitted that last week, so hopefully we'll do it by August.
What would be the terms on which the money would be available?
Tax incentives, there are tax credits.
Property tax credits.
Yes, and it's from the state, so the state board is the one that actually.
They pay taxes to the town though, they pay property taxes to the town.
They. Give tax incentive credits for up to fifty thousand dollars for property. This is a brand new program the state launched this year, so.
For new businesses or?
So, yeah, to revitalize those vacant storefronts, either for the property owner to, you know, get somebody back in there. Or, you know, if you own the property, then you try and open up something.
So if a person gets that. That grant of fifty thousand, that reduced their taxable assessment by fifty thousand?
Have to look into that, the specifics, again, this is the first year they're doing this, so and not soon as they actually award. Towns the ability to, this grant, you know, hopefully we get it and I'll definitely have more space for you on it.
Thank you.
But. You know, highlighting that as well, something that we did last week too is we launched our new business incentives, which is a plan, which is called a friendly, L E E, friendly. Approach to doing business, which when someone is coming to town and they don't really know, you know, that they're a new business owner. Or they want to start a business and they don't necessarily know the proper ways to go about permitting, you know, who they talk first, what they do. It's a roundtable discussion, they, they talk to me, they tell me what business they want to start. What licenses, you know, maybe they're looking at, so, oh, I want to have a restaurant that serves alcohol. So I'm going to talk to the select board assistant, I'm going to talk to the building department to make sure, you know, if, if they're doing any renovations, what do they need, they need to give occupancy, a certain inspection. And have a sit down, you know, get together with them first, that way it's not, you know, what I, what I noticed. First few months working here, especially with some new businesses that came into town was just a general. Confusing process because they had to come into the building department or, you know, ask. Need if, if their bylaws, if they were allowed to have, you know, X business by right in their zone. And then, you know, I was like, you're the bylaws and it said, yes, they're like, oh, so I'm good, and I'm like, well, you need to talk to the building department and maybe, maybe the health department too and. DPW as well and select board and it's just this never ending cycle of who's next. So kind of having an approach of we all sit down with people, you know, when, when time permits, so schedule appointments and. Allow them to come in and talk to us and ask questions, you know, with a representative from every necessarily department or at least. With those who can make it, obviously, you know, not everyone will be able to make it all the time. But understanding, you know, I can actually, we can make a step by step, a defined plan together of, okay, let's go to the building department first to get renovations done. And when that's done, you know, then go here and then you go here, so that is something that's kind of coupled with these other incentives for, for businesses as well. Is this new friendly approach, so hopefully it will make more sense. We had our kind of soft launch of. The program last week, we had just kind of an informative session with. Chamber sent out information that we were having a meeting and Alex Teninger came from the chamber as well, so we're kind of in a.
Not much energy there, huh? She's got plenty of energy.
She's great.
Wow.
So very excited about that and that should be on our website within the next. Couple of weeks, it's a PDF and then you'll be able to actually schedule appointments again directly for me. So very excited about that.
And it's on our website.
It will be.
It will be.
It will be, we're just speaking a couple of things.
All right, very good.
Other than that.
Enjoying the summer, yeah, everybody, it's finally some summer weather, anyone else have anything going on?
We spoke this morning about the old presentation idea. Putting the plant on board.
Yep, yep, Nick going Zoom, so it'll be good to share it tonight.
It was difficult like last time, it was up here. Folks up here had trouble seeing it, we had trouble seeing it, people at home could not see.
Definitely, yeah, they couldn't see it at all.
We're making discussions here.
And it's amazing how many, well, it's not amazing, but so many people walked it afterwards that you don't even realize.
This would be helpful, if we can transmit it up there and. Everybody will be able to see it.
Should, should be good.
Right. We got a few more minutes.
Other than that, I'll be having, so as you all know, my department, July one will also include conservation as well. We did hire a conservation agent slash land use assistant, they'll be starting with us. Seventh of July. After they start.
So is Kathy done?
Kathy will be staying on until, you know, for a couple of. Months until this little person is out and running and trained and then she will be taking her retirement, very well served, so.
Yes, exactly.
I don't yet know, you know, when her timeline ends, but she's still here now.
They're going to do away with the board completely?
Nope. No, the conservation agent is the one that goes out and does the site visits afterwards to make sure that conditions are being kept up. The board has repeatedly, or the commission has repeatedly, you know, mentioned how many of them have mobility issues or not enough time in the day to actually.
So we have an agent or not yet?
They're, they're starting July seventh, we just.
Oh, who is it? Do we know yet?
I'll say it's here.
Okay.
Nobody, I don't believe anybody tells us, so I'm very excited to get that. Process going and build up the department, so as well, they may come to planning board meetings, if I can't make it, they'll be the ones here, but you're still my boards.
You know, one time. You came in like looking for a building permit. All the boards met up one night. You walk in, yeah, the good part is you walk, you walk out, you had a, you had a boom.
Yeah, so that's with a friendly approach, you know, that's the idea, at least we could start getting, just with the different departments. Start getting more of a streamlined approach, because I mean, people's. It can't all be just generalized timeline for every business because people's needs aid. And I know that and we can all recognize that, but starting to get, you know, more people involved, talking to each other in the beginning, I think will be a help.
Think the, what you're doing with the, what's it, friendly?
Friendly approach.
I think it's something like that in the master plan too, as I recall. We were observing in our discussions that. It was, life is very confusing for applicants from out of town or out of state, trying to open business here. It's never really very clear. Exactly how many steps you have to go through, so this is a great step forward.
Very excited, and again, we're just picking up a couple of final things and then the, the PDF. Will be available on the website and if anybody has any questions, I'm not direct on touch, so. It's kind of a helpful step by step process, just one sheet, but again, the actual content of the friendly approach to doing business will be the meeting, the talking with.
You're like a, you have like a electronic flyer? Can you forward that to my email?
Yeah.
I'll share it.
When it's done, absolutely, yeah. We're just tweaking, we, again, we had our soft launch last week, where a couple, you know, people interested in running, making a new business in town came and they just had a couple of different critiques, so. Quickening that out right now, we'll send it out.
I see Gordon made it. Few more minutes.
Mr. Chairman. Nope.
Hi, how you doing, Gordon?
I'm all right, hey, this is like, they say deja vu all over again, I. Just remembered that I have a streamlining, the permitting. In the town of Lee document from the late nineties. I will be getting that to Brooke, just so she's aware, it's down in my office, so I will get it to her in case there's any ideas out of there that she can utilize, sounds like she's well on her way. Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, but anyway, I saved, I saved most of those kind of things, so. It's definitely about streamlining the permitting process in specific to the town of Lee, so I will get that to her and thank you very much.
Thank you, Gordon.
Great, and that, I mean, from then, Gordon, we did. What was the level of online permitting back then?
Almost none.
Yeah.
Almost none, it was all getting to, but we did have joint, you know, the recommendation was always joint, joint public meetings for special permit granting authorities. You know, generic plan reviews in front of everybody, so, but anyway, it's a, it's a healthy document, but it isn't too big, I'll get it to Brooke. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Online didn't even exist at that time.
We were, we, we didn't have permitting that way.
Yeah. Back when everything, yeah, everybody was still faxing back then. And the state still does some of their stuff, but they're so antiquated, God.
I'm going to sit over there so I'm not blocking anybody, it's a very busy movement. And not in the way.
Shit.
Not way to screen.
Okay.
Camera now, I was hiding before.
Yeah, that's true.
Buck, I know we've got a outdated plan. Maybe when we begin, we should give the applicants a chance to.
That's where we'll start on.
One thing, when.
Okay.
I don't.
And our only microphones up here, right? So. So they put the. It's here from the gallery. Yep. Out, now, here we go. Well, here we are. This time I'd like to open up. Special permit hearing. For forty-eight to fifty-two West Center Street and ninety-five to one oh five Canal Street. Will our applicants like to come forward and show us the updates from last meeting? Yep, we had some requests from you, for you and. And you changed some things, I see.
Perhaps. Do you need a cable? No, apparently.
You're going to share your screen so everyone at home can see.
That is the intention.
Okay.
I don't know how to get it so that. My face is in there, but. My face is in there, but. I'm not.
Hey, try it now, it should work.
Good evening. My name is Lee Elton, I'm here from Westwood Architects. Um, I'm joined this evening by, uh. Stephanie Lane, who is the executive director of the CDC South Ventures. Uh, Jim Harley, who is the president of the Board of Jurey of. CDC South Ventures. And I also have the, uh, Rebecca Lampers from Heartland Design. Was the landscape designer and presenting the landscape portion, am I speaking loudly enough today? The landscape portion of the design. And, uh, I have Bob Bonier from SK Design will be presenting the civil engineering aspects of the inside. Um, I gave. To you, uh, memorandum, I hope that you received it. It outlined the things that we discussed the last. And tried to also address the five questions which are the criteria. Or the smart growth overlay. Um, do you feel that I need to review this for you, or do you think that you can write it on your own?
We just got it, so you should probably review it.
Yeah.
Okay, Chairman Jeff, I'm sorry.
Yes, I think so, yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go over, what, what we, what we requested, if you could go over that.
Okay. What you requested, you were, it's beyond the first question. On page three. But about page two. There, these are the things that we actually specifically discussed, such as where, there about it. The open space requirements in your last town meeting were changed from three hundred, five hundred square feet to three hundred square feet per bedroom. And this complies with that requirement. It's shown on the front cover sheet. But between the open space on the site and the common deck, we exceed it, we are. At three hundred and thirty square feet per, per bedding. As opposed to the three hundred that's required. And I think I mentioned to you the last time that the attorney general has not approved what the town meeting. Prove. And you would want to make a contingent upon their proof. So on the third page, on the top of the third. We discussed, uh, whether daycare is that it was an acceptable use or permitted use. And, um, because they are proposing perhaps to do daycare for the residents, for the residents and their families. Their kids. Uh, in the commercial, uh, section that's on the, shown on the first floor. And, uh, you, you made the determination that seemed, that you felt it felt, fell under the educational use. Which is one of the permitted uses. Talked about parking states, pace dimensions, there are no specific dimensions that are required for parking spaces. Parking spaces that we generally are proposing are nine by twenty, which are a hundred and eighty square feet and exceeds a square foot requirements. But we told you that we have six spaces that are for compact cars. They are eight by eighteen. And that's six out of seventy-four spots, all the rest of them comply with that requirement. And it was the general feeling of the board that you felt that would be acceptable. That is a variance for the code. Uh, we also talked about, uh, traffic study letter that was provided with some backup material from Fuss and O'Neil. To determine the number of parking, the number of trips per day. And in that, in that, you, you reviewed that literature and that package that was provided, uh, at that meeting. And determined that, um, you did not feel that any further traffic study beyond that letter was required. Finally, there was a question about the driveway issue. Um, because the driveway that we're proposing is directly across the street from the driveway for. The proposed, uh, mill site redevelopment. And you asked us to go back and discuss it with. The traffic engineer, and you might remember we met on a Monday, uh, two weeks ago. And of course, when I called the traffic engineer, he was on a two week vacation. So I reached him today. And, um, he, uh, it's, uh, his name is Steve Savaria, he's a, uh, registered traffic engineer working for Fuss and O'Neil. And they actually did some traffic study work for Eagle Mill, but it initiated about ten, ten years ago. So he was familiar with the site and he's familiar with our site. And he said that if they were acting as a consultant on these two jobs, they would be recommending that the two driveways be directed across the street. From each other rather than spaced apart, because there would be less area of interference with the traffic flow. And since we only reached it today, I cannot provide a letter, but we will provide a letter to that effect. They said that, he said that if for some reason you were going to offset the parking spaces. Then there would have to be a minimum of fifty feet or more, because the way that people sometimes turn. They sometimes turn to each other and. I'm sure that your bylaws. Date that, but frankly, I could not find something in your bylaws that stipulated the distance between. Driveway entries onto a street, I couldn't find something that specifically addressed. So, um. In short, I think that, uh. I will, we will provide a letter for Fuss and O'Neil that states what their position is about that. Um, I. I think we've, we've discussed last possibility of. Moving the pedestrian walkway about fifteen feet further to the east, so it would be closer to these driveways. We, as a, as a development team, think that that would be advisable, but, uh, you know, we're perfectly willing to have a traffic engineer. Work on that as well. And the question is whether it would be, uh, signaled. Which were, where there'd be a flashing light that would commit. To us, it is a fairly heavily trafficked area. And I'm not sure that's within the parameter of this, of us. That state to you, what we think should happen, but we're happy to collaborate with you and the planning office. To determine what might be the appropriate. Finally, there was one further. At the, the, the voice concerns about the degree of traffic on Nelson's. Um, and maybe I should bring the, the site lineup. It's just to refresh your memory, and I don't know if you can see the cursor as well. But we are entering off of West Center, this is a two-way street that goes down through here. And so, um, so there is potential for. People would park and when they come out, they could choose to either go back out to West Center, or they could come through to here. Um. There was a concern about that exit. And one thing that was mentioned in passing by members of your board was the possibility of putting, adding a gate to that. And, um, where. We don't think that that is a good idea, but we would not, I mean, obviously, it's your determination.
I think they'd be discussing that, yes.
And also, I just wanted to say that I met with Chief Brown today.
Yeah.
Earlier today, so you might want to, so I'll say his opinion about that. Um, so. And that summarizes pretty much the things that I think that were specifically brought up. There were questions about the site and technical issues about the zoning. But, um, I thought we resolved, but that maybe will be, um, like. Want something better for a landscape design? Yes, there is much. Is that that?
Okay. So, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay. I will get it to you.
Before we get into discussion.
So this is your site, that will give, what can you schedule, and then the next one is the woodsy one. You just turn on this.
Okay, just won't hit it.
And so what is the woodsy one with new stuff? Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to somebody more competent at this.
Hi, I'm Rebecca, and I'm here, um, I primarily design for residential properties, um, so. For me, I'm coming in from the perspective of people are gonna be living here, looking out these windows, using this space. So what are they looking at, and what is the space, you know, what kind of feelings is the space creating for them? Do they feel safe, do they feel like they're living in a beautiful place, um, the building is very tall? That little line. So flat, yeah.
We have somebody who's younger and more competent.
Not me. Yeah, there's, you got it. Why not? So this first drawing you're looking at is. For all, all, pretty much all the trees and shrubs. Um, so let's see if I can take this thing. Moral support, let's just talk about the front, um, of the street here, the, this is, this is West, West Center Road here. Yeah, this one here, okay, so this is like a very narrow space, I've only got. About ten feet or fifteen feet to plant trees, but I think it is important to do plant trees, so I, I, um. I chose trees that are, um, very salt tolerant and have a columnar shape, so they grow very narrow. Um, they do have fall interest, they're deciduous, so they will shed their leaves. Um, but generally, um. You're gonna have some, some height in here to offset, I mean, eventually, these trees could. Reach about twenty or thirty feet high, but they don't get very wide, they're, they're very, they're very columnar. So, uh, this red tree is one of those trees in the fall. And here it is again in. It's green. Let's see if we can find it. Oak, the other oak. Well, okay, it's over here, so this is a smaller oak as well, that they're basically both oak trees that would go in that space. Um, really picked for the fact that they are excellent street trees and, um. We have very little space in there, so, uh, over in this corner here, this is where that railroad crossing is. Um, and then the, there, there's that drive through right here, so there's a lot of parking, um, that's visible here. I put a tree and some shrubs in there, um, just to sort of mask the view of the parking. And give a little more privacy, kind of looking into the space. But these trees, again, are the same as these trees up here, or this one up here on the corner. So only gonna get about thirty feet tall, very, again, very slow growing too. So this big island here is where there is currently a Norway spruce. Did I hit her? I got it. So you have a, a very, very tall Norway spruce, we, we have three of them on site right now. Um, we, we'd like to try to keep them, at least keep one of them. Um, there, it's the only tree that really will scale right now with the height of the building, which is important, we think, so. Uh, a lot of effort has been made to save at least one of those trees. Um, this is, this is the location of that one tree. Um, so this little park-like planter. Um, is basically going to be planted with, with more trees, two more Norway spruce that will eventually. Not in our lifetime, get as tall as that Norway spruce, so they're kind of growing together, but for a long time, it'll just give, uh, privacy, that's what. These. That's what, uh, these, these two, this tree right here is, it's a Norway spruce. Um, and that's what it's gonna look like for a long time, for people living there. Um, and then this tree right here is a catalpa, and catalpas are actually blooming right now all over the place, they have beautiful white flowers. Um, they're great pollinator plants, they're native, um, most of the plants I picked here are natives or cultivars of native trees. Um, and this also will want to get very tall, so that will actually scale and be like the sister tree to the other, to the Norway spruce. And then, uh, dotted in here are some more of those columnar oaks. Sort of a repeat of theme from here and this corner, and that is also here on this corner, so. Trying to repeat that theme of those oaks, um. And roots from continuity, but also because we know they work. And then along here, these are actually birch trees, gray birch. Um, they, they're pretty fast growers, you can get clumps, like multi-stems, you can get single stems, you can do a variety of things. All along the, uh, the space between the walkway and, and the, and the building. And they're also repeated over here too, so that's to really give people privacy. And, um, and some shade and some, uh, kind of quicker scaling to the building. They don't get very wide, ten to twenty feet, they're fast growers, they're about forty feet tall. So they're represented down here, these pictures are here, are what I was. They have kind of a golden yellow fall color. Um, they can be used in sort of park-like settings, they're hardier than the white birch, they don't get problems with the bronze bird for. Um, and I am repeating them all throughout here around. This existing set of trees that, that are on site right now as well. Um, so those are the other large trees that we're trying to save. Um, also to help scale with the building, um, and then all around that would be a, a grove of white birch. Or gray birch, excuse me, people, people think it's white birch, but it's gray birch, it's a little, a little bit heartier. Um, and then these trees right here are red maples, um. So there's a picture, red maple, beautiful in the fall, we all know what red maples look like. Um, and then, uh. Dotted around here are some. Uh, magnolias, they're a, a semi-evergreen magnolia around here, they're, they can be evergreens. Um, for a little further south, but they do tend to shed their leaves, they hold on to their leaves for a long time, they get quite large, they're really great for screening. I know these pictures aren't very big to see, I'm having a hard time even finding which one is a magnolia. It's this one right here, that's the magnolia, and that's the flower. So, um, they're just a great tree for, for screening, so people living in this space would have some privacy. Um, against the, uh, community space and maybe not see the storage, uh, facility over here as much. And I was thinking quite a bit about, um, people's privacy, there is some decks here. Um, I'd like to plant, um, salt tolerance, some, some shade tolerant. Evergreens in these zones, um, that will help give people some privacy and sense of security. From this, uh, other space over here. So these are, um. Picea, they're spruce, so they're represented, they're also very columnar, very narrow space that I have to work with here, so this is the spruce. Um, and then we have taxes which are used, so they're upright varieties, so they're represented. In this picture and this picture here, so they're actually, uh, lining this whole zone. And following all the way through the community space, so people hanging out grilling with their kids and stuff, um, don't also have views of. Of the storage, uh, facility there. Got it, okay. Um, and that line of taxes or use go right through to the community garden space. Kind of line this whole area, so it really gives the folks when they're outside in this zone quite a lot of privacy. Um, and also because this is a, this is a space that we're trying to encourage people to, to have vegetable gardens, community gardens. I also thought about just, um, trees that have edible options, so. These trees right here are a type of service berry, they're called coal secret. Um, I don't have a picture of the fruit, this is a, this is a picture of the flowering tree right here. Um, they, they flower in the spring, and like, malachia is another name for them, they're a native, but they're a cultivar of native. Anyway, they produce a great fruit that you can actually eat, you can make tea and preserves out of them. So it might be a little bit messy, but also might be. So it might be a little bit messy, but also might be a little bit fun for people to um, have a little walkway um, of emalachia through here um, with fruit that they could actually eat. And then this little zone right here um, are actually apple trees. So I thought it'd also be great to have a, a, a small orchard in that zone. So I, I cited for three different varieties. Actually don't have pictures, but we know what apple trees look like. They're all pretty much semi-dwarf. Um, they do flower and they do produce edible fruit. So that's something for the folks to look forward to who are living there. Um, let's see. Oh, I'll just back up a little bit, sorry. So, um, in this zone here, there's also some um, another variety of emalachia. They're not the ones with the edible fruits. They have smaller berries. They're very attractive to birds. Um, this is a picture of them in flower right now. Um, can get a multi-stem, can get a single stem. Um, they have white flowers early spring and, and then they have red berries in the summertime. Uh, cedar waxwings love to eat the fruit from those trees. And they just, and they're a little bit of an understory, so they'll do fine in a semi-shade area, which this will be because of all of the trees we kind of put in here. Uh, so zoom over to the playground area. You've got a few uh, red maples, repeated theme from over here um, to give some shade to the, the folks on the playground. Um, and then um, just outside of this fenced yard, there's more of those uh, semi-evergreen, green magnolias. So just give people privacy uh, between the playground and the, and the house in this yard here. Uh, and then again, repeated theme with the gray birch along this line here, another red maple here, more emalachia that um, variety that looks like this. Another catalpa tree here on the corner on this island, that's a catalpa right there. And then over in this house, it's very similar to this planting, gray birch and red maple. Um, some lilacs over in here. They're pretty low maintenance. Everything here is low maintenance. I, I even spaced the, the um, the, the, the use so that they won't have to be sheared. You can just, if you have them spaced properly, they just grow in a nice row and you don't have to spend a lot of money on maintenance, shearing that stuff. They give them a little bit of time to fill in and and they're, they're good to go. Uh, let's see what else is in here. Well, I mean, that's pretty much, that's pretty much it for the woodies. Let's something else to the the veracious snow. Okay. So we're, we're trying not to do lots. We're trying to do um, uh, more natives, more natural look, um, more of a woodland setting. So um, that's, that's why you're seeing some of these plants here, because I'm pretty much picking ferns and clump-forming brasses um, to fill the spaces in here. So um, imagine this being a gray birch stand just full of full of woodland ferns that look like this here. And full of uh, Eric's Pennsylvania gum. That's this grass here. Um, it's just a native woodland sedge. It's clump-forming and um, it's, it's very nice to walk on and you don't have to weed or mow. Oh, you might have to weed a little bit, but you don't have to mow it. Um, so this whole space is, is basically full of the Pennsylvania sedge, the ferns, there's some aquilegia, that's just a native columbine, um, that would be in the woodland space here. Um, this dotted area represents um, the orchard. And I recommend that we actually uh, just plant that with clover seed. So clover is um, a different option from, from lawn. You can walk on it. Um, it's nitrogen fixing, so it actually pulls nitrogen out of the atmosphere, puts it back into the soil. So it's very good for the soil and the plants. Um, and you only have to really white clover anyway. You only really have to mow it every few weeks. And it's much more drought tolerant than than grass. So you'd have a nice green space there all the time that people can walk into around the orchard. And I recommended the same thing for the space around the playground as well, that of lawn. Um, and then we've got just some tall perennials in here just for um, interest. They, they're kind of a backbone to the garden. It's this baptisia or, or fall tindago, it's called. Blooms, blooming right now. Um, and it's just a very long-lasting tough perennial. So that's kind of forms a little bit of a wall. Um, remember those emalachia are right along that path, so right behind it, sort of giving a little bit of privacy into the um, playground is this wall, three foot high baptisia. Uh, and then um, some of the other plantings we, um, are grasses. So this is a called prairie dropseed, and it's great border plant. It would border this whole zone. So it's just very nice soft grass. Um, it has a very, I got, this is the, you can kind of see that's, those are the seed heads in the fall. They're very fine. They're, they're an ornamental grass, I guess, but they're also just a native. All these grasses are native, not necessarily to the northeast, but they are considered uh, native to um, Pennsylvania and a little blue stem is more to the Great Plains. But, so we do have some little blue stem. That's this plant right here. Um, that's used in the islands. So these, these islands are just planted with perennials, so they can get snow dumped on them. Um, we don't have to worry about plow damage or whatever. They're just, you know, they'll come back in the spring every year. So they'll be just a big mass of, of the little blue stem, which is this plant right here. Looks like this in the, in the summertime, looks, turns a little bit red in the fall. And then um, some baptisia kind of anchoring it against the um, that retaining wall. That's where the railroad tracks kind of lead up to the railroad tracks. Um, so that's, that, that theme is repeated with a little boost them. And then in this zone here, there's, there's an oak tree, one of those columnar oaks, underplanted it uh, with amsonia. So amsonia is this terrific perennial that also gets about three feet high. This is the color in the fall, but in the summertime, it has a very fine uh, lacy, kind of asparagus looking, like when asparagus is flowering. It's a fine, fine foliage, little blue flower, but really the showstopping aspect of it is this terrific fall color. And then we also are thinking about spring. So lots of, of bulbs interplanted all throughout these zones. This zone here is a little bit more formal with using some of this allium blooming in the springtime in around, around May. And also um, this ground cover, silla versus Siberian swill. And we're gonna mix in some clumps of daffodils too. So there's gonna be lots of things going on all season long. It's gonna be spring, summer, and fall interest. Um, and uh, areas for people to actually maybe wants to hang out in. Uh, I think that's about it.
Thank you.
Oh yeah, one more thing.
Oh, one more.
I thought one more thing. So this is that uh, would you call it a park floor? You know, you drive under it. You don't wanna call it a park floor. Just people live with it. So it's kind of a weird zone, the planting bed in here. Um, and it's gonna get shaded from um, from this part of the building. So in that zone, um, I, I chose to use this Christmas fern here, which grows in pretty good shade. It's a really tough plant. It's, it's uh, evergreen too, so it does have interest throughout the whole, the whole year. Um, so it's just a big mass of, of uh, the Christmas here. Any questions?
That's a plan.
We have for a plan. There's a plan.
To absorb and they're little tiny pictures, so I'm even having a hard time reading it. I kind of have, wish I had my big plan. But yeah, it's, um, there is the only non-natives in here besides the bulbs are the hostas. They're used up in these little planters um, that are here, here, and also in the front of the building. Um, they're gonna just have hosta in them and some uh, inkberry, which is that evergreen shrub. I'll, I'll go back to this page. This is actually a large variety. I called for this throughout. Also, there's, there's inkberry here and here. They're just to give people some more privacy. They're also a native and they're an evergreen. And they do have little blackberries. They're not edible. Um, the birds will eat them eventually. Um, but in the planters are a, a more dwarf variety of shamrock that um, will also just give people a little bit of interest throughout the lincher. And the lincher hostas, so very, very low maintenance. No, no, for me, you don't have to ever throw in the new area. They just kind of keep their around. And they're much more diseases resistant than boxwoods, which are people are kind of mistake them for sometimes.
Okay, I have individual questions about landscaping now or will we tell you?
I think as we go along, if there's questions about landscaping.
There's just a couple.
Yep.
The formal landscape plan, all the trees and plants, very uh, very articulate, uh, well, very comprehensive, quite ample, I would say. Um, under legend, it mentions the heights. Is that the mature height?
Yeah.
That's not the installed height.
That's mature height, yeah.
I'm kind of a hardscape guy, so that's not my thing. I know I see a landscape like, kind of like that. There's, that's a hell of a budget. Okay, there's gonna be expectation. If that's on the plan and this is what you're representing, it's gonna be expected. That's what's gonna be done.
We're gonna carry up to you.
Yes.
Nice, correct.
Okay, that's, that's quite a budget.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we we did the wind, windbrush.
I'm just, yeah.
We did something like this exactly, just did the, we executed the last data, the shock to the platform. It was special.
The slow-growing things tend to be the more expensive things. So, you know, we might have to scale with with the size of, you know, like the gray birch are not going to be as expensive as the, the columnar spruce, which are, are a little bit slower growing, although spruce are faster growing than use. So I mean, it's just the evergreens in general are gonna be a little bit slower growing. Um, although I would argue that the Norway spruce have like a medium period, but in the, in the earlier years, they broke for a year. Um, and they'll slow down as they get older, like we all do.
Peter. Um, do, do we have an estimate of how many children we expect to be in this project?
I, yeah, I, I don't know.
So, uh, my question is about your decision not to have grass. And I've been to many housing projects and driven by them and seen dead grass and mud and, you know, untended mounds. Um, and I'm trying to figure out whether this is better or harder to maintain.
Well, you might be able to answer that just based on we, this is a similar theme as to the Great Barrington House.
Okay, so there are fifty-four bedrooms beyond the primary bed. I mean, I assume that one bedroom is gonna be like five by thousand leagues. So there are fifty-four bedrooms that are that. And um, at Delight, we see that will be a hundred million children, but I don't think it's reasonable to assume that every bedroom would have double lights.
No, I'm, I don't need an exact number for this. I'm just trying to figure out for landscaping purposes. If you've got somewhere between fifteen to a hundred kids running around and you got ferns out in your yard, you know, our kids are gonna be running through the ferns and how are the ferns gonna survive?
I hope so. But really, the hay-scented fern is a really tough fern. It's, it, it forms a mat. So let me just see if I can find a picture of that. Um, once you've got it, you can't get rid of it really. So if the kids are running through it well, it's a fern. It looks a lot like this.
I know what it is.
Okay, yeah. So anyway, it's a, it's a really tough plant. All these grasses are really tough too. So it's I'm not worried about them hurting plants, that's for sure. It's more like they actually are going to experience more nature because they're not living in a place that's just lawn. They're gonna see more wildlife. They're gonna see more pollinators. Um, more butterflies. So I mean, there's, there's a lot of benefit to, to not just doing lawn. Um, and you know, yes, there's not a lot of areas for them to play. There's a playground. There's the, there's the big patio for grilling and stuff. There's the orchard area. Those are the, those are the areas that are gonna be clover or patio. So uh, that's I imagine where the kids are gonna be able to really run around. I mean, clover is pretty tough. You can
Yeah, I know.
Yeah. Can't get rid of it. People are trying to get rid of it all the time.
Trying to get rid of my walkways.
It seems like you got a lot of any plantings, which is a lot of maintenance. Uh, as the project gets over and over.
Uh, the, the, the hope is, is actually the maintenance is really um, cut down in the fall and weeding. You have to weed initially to, to, to encourage the things that you want, right? And then once they establish, then you're doing a lot less weeding. Everything will have to get mulched. So they're gonna be, the weeds are gonna be controlled with the mulch. But then really, um, what you have is a space that, that needs to be cut down once at the end of the season. So that's a lot different than mowing once a week. So it's not the same it's not the same as telling anybody to say, go out and weed, because some people don't know the difference between a weed or, or not. But I mean, you're pretty much leaving grasses and ferns and um, columbine. Like it's not, it's not rocket science, I hope. So I hope that people would be able to
Well, I just hope that, as I say, as the project, and it goes through
Yeah.
um, gets older, uh, doesn't look like the Sahara relative. There's nothing left. It's been more overgrown, yeah.
There's a maintenance plan.
But there is a maintenance plan, and I'd like to also suggest I'm happy to give a tour to you if you'd like to see the Wind Lake project, which is now three years old. It's a similar uh, strategy.
Yeah.
We do have a little bit of lawn there. Yeah, not very much.
Anything else for landscape guys?
I just with this, these voracious plantings are the, in potential of fifty-four kids. Are there more ticks in the bees planting, those little grass?
Um, I think that you're gonna run the risk of ticks, period. So I mean, I, I know that ticks tend to hang out on tall grass, right? So that's more in meadows and fields, but they're gonna be wherever there are mice. So, um, I don't think you can really avoid the ticks. I mean, I think that people are gonna have to educate their kids on on ticks, for sure. But I also know that you can get ticks hanging out on your lawn too.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Doesn't really, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be, you know, because it was dangling off of a fern that you brushed against.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, now we're gonna start into our I, I, are you all set or are you?
We are civil.
Civil, all right, let's go to civil.
Uh, it was in the issue that was brought up um, about uh, fencing. And the drawings show now that we are putting fencing, we're putting fencing between the tracks in our project, the six-foot-high cedar fence, horizontal boards. It's based uh, one-inch apart, so there's a little bit of light and transparency to it. And we're doing a similar thing on the uh, west side. Um, and, and also we're jogs separated from the from the residential properties along, along uh, Finale Street. And also the properties that, based on the storage areas to to segregate the views of that. We are doing it to six feet, which is the highest as committed by your zoning code. Uh, we are not proposing to do, we are proposing to do fencing on Finale Street for the two residential properties that have picket fences because one of the houses that are on Finale Street currently have picket fences that are about three feet high. So we're proposing to replicate that in terms of the appearance. And, but we're not closing the fence along West Center. So it's sort of more of a commercial area. And uh, that's the limits of what we're proposing, because fencing is something that you folks specifically asked about last so just wanting to do that. And at this point, I'd like to suggest that Bob Fornier, who's the civil engineer from SK Design, kind of take off.
Um, Bob Fornier with SK Design, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about floodplains, drainage, and utilities. Um, couldn't take too long. This is what I'm gonna add up on the screen, but it's a little easier to read, because I've colored it some. But I Yeah, so the first plan, the set there is the one on the screen, the front. And that talks about uh, I'll go through floodplain first, which is the red line shown on the first plan. So the floodplain um, on the site comes as a, encompasses about two-thirds between the red line and the river. So what that means is anything that we build in that floodplain area, we have to compensate for uh, foot per foot incrementally. Which means when we do our grading plan, can't have any larger fill sections. And more importantly, when we build a building in it, uh, we have to allow the floodwaters to go beneath the building in the event of the under here storm. So that's what's gonna happen with this small building, the, the two smaller buildings gonna be designed with foundations that have uh floodmets in them, that allow floodwater to, to actually go beneath the building, then when the floods we see, it comes back out, that's a common practice for construction in the floodplain. The finished floor grades of these buildings have to be at or above floodplain, which they go, so the, the actual living space doesn't get flooded. So all the utilities for the buildings have to be at that level as well. Um, so that, a little bit about floodplain, uh, as far as drainage is concerned, it's highlighted in green, we're gonna have several underground storage systems that will accommodate the increase in impervious surfaces that this project will create. It'll, you know, result in increasing runoff if we didn't do something about. So we're gonna, we're proposing that we have these uh three underground storage systems, I don't know if you've seen them in the area, I mean, once they're buried, you can now see them again, but when they're under construction, what they are, is they're uh moon-shaped uh or crescent-shaped plastic uh I don't know what you call them, they're, we call them infiltrators, and they're laid side by side and end by end. Water from the parking lots is placed in one end, and it comes out the other, essentially.
They're supposed to perk through it once you?
It does have, yes, it does have uh circulating capabilities.
Uh, if you had a flood, these things become super saturated, how long would it take before, I mean, you're, you're gonna have runoff now?
Well, there's, we have outlets to, to each one of them, it doesn't just, it's not just piped into the ground, like if you look at that, the first drawing shows all the drain pipes in green, I believe. Right, right, there's a series of pipes, it eventually ties into the one in Canal Street. There's an existing twelve-inch drain in Canal Street that actually runs through the river. And our drainage systems will tie into that as overflow. So a majority of the storms, the water will just percolate into the ground. But, you know, after it's been draining for twelve or twenty hours or whatever, it'll eventually come out the other end and this chart into that existing if we didn't have some kind of overflow system, then it could back up to the entire drainage system. Then uh the next drawing I want to talk about is just utility. I'm just showing um sewer and water, in our mind, are most important ones. Then I'm showing a tower connection, there's a twelve-inch water main in West Center Street. And the idea is to tap into that, run it through our driveway. Key off of that with a hydrant, service connections to the buildings, then tie into the existing, there's a orange line in Canal Street, so we're gonna create a looped system, which is, I should leave quickly, uh, fire department just commented on this as early as today. So all the buildings will have their own sewer, water, of course, electric. Sometimes we don't know where the electric's gonna come from until we get the electric company involved and placing the transformers and stuff, so. I just wanted to touch bases on those. You have any questions? Well, covered it.
You know, a couple of quick additions.
Oh, don't run away, Conrad does.
I just want to mention about the other utilities, so we've been in contact with National Grid.
Yeah.
And um, we do show on the site plan, they have now transformer. The service on uh West Center is, is an underground service, so we'd be coming in underground transformer. It's on a site plan, the two services for the small buildings, uh Canal Street has overhead service, and we are closing on that service. Um, we are not closing gas on all that good project. Um, telecommunications, sorry, I don't know exactly, but I think we'll be doing overhead on, on Canal Street, because that's where all the other houses are. Delta, and I haven't quite got the best part of permission.
Are the utilities gonna be in conduit, the, uh, are they gonna be like waterproof cover? To keep them, if they have a flood, if it floods over the top of the manholes, the water doesn't fill up the uh conduits?
So I'm sorry, you're talking about this in reference to what it's doing?
No, I'm talking about electrical.
Electrical, okay. Sorry, we haven't gotten that far with National Grid, but I think the answer is yes, but.
Conrad, did you have some questions for him?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones on the uh the uh under your floodplain, the red line is the existing under your flood?
Yes.
Or your proposed under your floodplain, that's the existing? What is that elevation?
Nine ninety.
It's nine ninety?
Yeah.
What's the groundwater elevation in this area?
Groundwater?
Yeah.
I don't know, I'm just thought ahead, we have done several test pits there, though, as part of Stormwater Design Eagle Mill, this was actually part of the Eagle Mill design at one time.
Right.
Okay, so we have, I just don't know.
The seasonal groundwater level is higher than what your infiltrators were?
Yeah, well, right, we'll uh we'll present all that detail to the conservation, they require a very elaborate drainage analysis, so just out there yet.
Right, um. So you get the stormwater plant, you got the utility plant, you got the profiles on it, compensatory storage, how are you, how are you addressing compensatory storage?
Question.
Because that's, that's a big area that's being uh impacted.
Yeah, uh, so that corner of the building.
Yeah, the corner of the building here, that, in these buildings here.
No, I don't think they count, because they're, they got the the open, the open.
In this area, the same being in this building?
Yes, yeah, so we have to compensate for the thickness of the walls
Right.
and the various piers, and there's other random stuff that we're building, and most of the compensation's gonna come right underneath the building here, we show some regrading there, also around the, the roofery of the site. Uh, we are excavating material out of, so yeah, we've got several areas of.
May I just, just kind of briefly, so there is basement here, you see the line right there? That's way above the floodplain.
Okay.
So that is the basement, this is all a, a, a floodable crawl space.
Okay.
And same thing is true for the other building.
So that's how you draw for that space, that's fine.
And you can see that's only a small portion of that big building that's in the floodplain. What we've done is we've excavated down more, so that most of that area that's not the basement is, is not below the floodplain. To create more competitive storage. If you're doing, you're performing construction activities within the floodplain, you have to go, there's only those appeals often?
Yes.
So you're aware of that?
Yes.
And that's part of your application process?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Doesn't remove the control plan, there's none provided.
Yeah, um, that, that will have to be required for the conservation. Uh, you know, if, if you want, for your records, you can add road controls to one of these plans. Or you can condition it.
Well, it's, it's part of the major site plan, total process, that, that's why I mentioned it. Uh, it doesn't matter to us at this point? Or do you wanna waive it from our major site plan, or if it's gonna get addressed in conservation, maybe it doesn't matter?
Conservation, I think, it doesn't, the site doesn't lend itself to major issues.
Lots of construction activity on the floodplain?
It is, but it, yes, that, and that's, but that's concon.
I think a lot of the questions you're gonna answer when you bring out the plans for the hotel that's supposed to be across the street. As you said, you did a lot of preliminary work on that already, so I think.
And this is, this is a relatively small site, so the crap of erosion is pretty low. It's not like, and it's your site.
Yeah. Bring out construce on the side of the house.
No, as long as, as long as conservation is gonna handle air tart, the only one that's gonna handle the
Yep.
construction activities in the floodplain, they'll, they'll take care of that. Got some other questions for Nick later on on the site time, but is it going to the next part?
Next part?
What is the next part?
Let's use it.
So, um, yeah, we're are you, anything else for us for tonight?
I have made some minor modifications to specific things that I may not do these very quickly, but
Yes, please.
But there was, there was something you had to say. Um, okay. So, we haven't materially changed the floor plan in any way that's significant. Um, what we did do, I think there was a, a request to do a little bit more in the archway here, so we're suggesting what we might do up here, have to be honest, I mean, we'd like to have some play on this, I mean, you know, but, but we're certainly willing, uh
Sounds more interesting.
We would do something into that, we're proposing that this upper unit would have a very, would have a very high ceiling. Essentially have double height spaces, so as to create uh more interest in the unit, but also more interest, you know, from the outside, so we did add that a bit.
Nick, it looks like you've got corbeling or, what do you, what do you call it, the uh?
The tail on the brickwork.
Yes, we have, we have corbeling along the tops of both of these, and we have the pilasters, and we increased the amount of inset tile, which you can sort of see. Interesting how the coloration is so different on your screen than it's on mine. Uh, and there's also some new stuff on the others, on the other side. Yeah, I mean, we are trying, is that, is that, no, sorry, I don't remember the address, but it's later in the presentation. One particular building, just like five, five storefronts, so we're trying to pick up some of the, the themes from that.
Right, thank you.
Yeah. So, we said, just changes so ways, but the big way that they changed is previously we showed decks across the entire side of this building, on the west side, as you come up over the hill, now we've limited the decks to the areas where the living room, dining room is, and you have to imagine, because we don't show it in the rendering, that there would be many, many trees in between the decks, just what was shown in your landscape. So I think that mitigates some of the length of it, and uh, I don't think, these drawings um have been modified to sort of begin to show you that the decks are smaller now, that will just stretch right here. So that's introduced into this, uh, the fences are shown, well, they should be shown. There are fences, it may be difficult to see, but they're out there. Um, and these are fundamentally the same, and we've done little tweaks to put in the fencing and, and the decks, because also the decks in the courtyard are not continuous anymore, and we've added more trees in there. This is a, this is, as I said, this is the hotel that was previously proposed. We did revise this because we realized that the building that is proposed for the Eagle Mill was shown in perspective, so it was actually set back, and now we want to show you because it is across the street, and it, it, it actually is a few feet higher than our three, than our third where our deck is. And the other thing we did was, there was concerns about the height of the railings. So the height of this general railing here, which was at forty-two inches, three foot six, which is what's required by college, we've changed it now to four foot six, so we added another foot. Uh, but we've done it in a way that we have a set of rails that are three foot six, now another set of rails is four foot six. And we have set a series of, of glazing between, so that, so that they can't get out. This is respective, essentially the same, you can see the decks are, they're, they're less decks now. This is the view, I think there was a concern about showing, uh, having landscaping on the southeast corner, if it's showing on the landscape plan. And now, we just want to show you that, that we're, that we're addressing that as well.
It took care of that?
So.
It took care of, that was good.
We do listen.
Yeah.
And um so you can see that the railings are higher there now. That's the, the courtyard side. And again, that's the, that was the other. So, we're here for any questions?
Okay. Thank you, I think that's uh it for our presentation, now we're gonna start into a discussion and deliberations, uh, I'd like to take a second and just say how we ended up here. Strategic plan, master plan was done a couple of years ago, out of that, it was shown, and it's been shown for a while, that the town of Lee lacks adequate housing. Therefore, that's, those studies were done back when Eagle Mill was done, Eagle Mill still doesn't cover it. Um, so that's why we are entertaining this uh project here. In the master plan, it stressed that, and tasked the planning board to try to increase the housing of the town of Lee. And um that's also what we're looking at tonight. To approve this project, there's five findings that we have to come up with. And I'd like to read them to you now, um, doesn't matter, I don't know, it doesn't, it doesn't, it, what we think, what we feel, where we are, these are the findings, we have to look for the best of the community. And they start out, finding number one, the structure and or use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. Finding number two, the structure, structure and or use is essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare at the proposed location. Finding number three, the structure and or use will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the established or future character of the neighborhood. Finding four, there will not be undue traffic congestion or undue impairment to pedestrian safety. Finding number five, the structure and or use will not load, overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility to such an extent that the proposed use or any existing use in the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare. Okay, so those are the findings that we have to come up with. We'll get going with discussion. I have two letters here. All ready, Gordon?
Well, just a point of order question, and then I'll be quiet, um, at what point are you having, like I had a bunch of questions on the landscaping and some other things, but at what point will the public uh bring comments to the board, I, I just don't know what your procedure?
We're gonna, so what we're gonna do, we're starting with the board now.
Yeah.
And then we'll start working through the, the uh public, I do have a letter here, I'd like to
Yeah.
read and enter in.
So we'll get a chance, so we'll get a chance at some point.
You will.
Super, thank you, that's all I wanted to know, thank you very much.
Yep, um, first off, before we get into our board discussion, I'd like to do a, a public letter that came in. It's anonymously written, but it is um signed by many people in that neighborhood. And it reads, uh, Lee Mull's New Affordable Housing Mixed-Use Development Plan Across From Eagle Mill. We are writing to express our strong opposition to the proposed construction of a housing development in our neighborhood. While we understand the need for affordable housing in our town, we believe that this project would have a detrimental impact to our community. First and foremost, the proposed development is simply too large for our area. The increase in population density would put a strain on our already overburdened infrastructure, leading to increased traffic congestions, noise pollution, and strain on our public services and peace and tranquility on the residents that live in the neighborhood. Additionally, the construction of this project would result in significant environmental damages, destroying natural habitats and putting wildlife at risk. Furthermore, the type of housing being proposed is simply not in keeping with the character of our town. It would alter the aesthetic of our area, replacing the existing greenery and open spaces with a monolithic, high-density housing complex. Finally, in conclusion, we are asking you to reconsider the proposed housing development. While we recognize the need for affordable housing, we believe that this project is simply not the right fit for our neighborhood. Thank you for your attention to this matter. And it's um two, two full pages of signatures. Main Street, Canal Street. Some on Fairview. That area. Also, we have one from Eng Langless, um, basically pertaining to the history of one of the developers, and it's too lengthy to read right now. But I'd like to put those into our record. But I'd like to put those into our record. Okay, um, I'm gonna, you know what, I usually wait till the end for my questions, but I'm gonna get them right up here. Pedestrian, um, enhanced crossing would not be a. In cr- enhanced crosswalk would not be a problem for you?
I shouldn't stick to the well, but I, I, I think it's something that we feel would be a benefit.
All right.
Given the urban.
Your, your entrance, is that, is that two lanes? And it's, and the height of it is?
Very lowest point sixteen.
Okay, perfect. Give me the percentage uh that you're going with affordable market rate. She is.
I am, it's a hundred percent affordable.
Uh, what percentage are you doing? Aren't you required for a certain percentage of section eight?
Um, you're not required to do a certain percentage of section eight, actually, um, but. The income ranges would be thirty percent to eighty percent of the area median income. Um, with, yeah.
Let's see, and I believe we'll, I'll take this right now, um. Your newest plan has a grass area out by the townhouses that blocks off the main parking lot of Canal Street. Your latest, one of your latest plans I saw.
So the site plan is up, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just looking through here to see what page. But anyway, I think. We have the fire chief here and I think we're, we need to maintain egress out there, out the back.
Okay, I, we, we, we're not showing change to that right now.
Okay. Or, or no gate? I don't.
I'm not choosing a gate, so.
Okay.
That's your decision, that's your decision.
Is that right? That work? For, for you?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, as, as the fire chief, um. I have an interesting task to balance my personal feelings with my professional needs. Uh, I would speak against uh limiting egress and access. Uh, of any way to this property. Uh, so the, the, the gate that I've heard fabled. Uh, would have to take some extenuating measures to make it work for us. So I, I would not be opposed to the gate on the end of the Canal Street uh property. And I don't live in that neighborhood. So I can't speak as a neighbor, I do live on Main Street, uh, about three hundred feet away from this. So I know what kind of traffic is on Main Street. Uh, I, I think human nature will take soup and most of the residents will leave the way they come in, uh, through the arch. But uh, from a purely public safety standpoint, having the two means of exit. And entrance are in the public's best interest.
Okay, thank you. Pete Brown. Pretty sure you guys will cover some other questions for me, Conrad, you wanna start? So we've already heard, we've already been through a lot of it, so just, just new stuff, okay? Just new stuff?
First question was snow storage. We're in the Berkshire.
No, absolutely.
We just find what the impact could be against the landscaping.
Yeah.
The ability to stores, store snow or, and you're gonna be looking at.
It is not applying to, to trust no prospect, okay, that is not economical by at all. And um, I, it was, it was always that in our part. We do believe that we can get some snow storage in a few locations. Uh, I can sort of quickly do it. We didn't, we believe we can do some clear, we believe we can bring a little bit here, we believe that we can do. Um, uh, as Rebecca mentioned, some of this landscape material can take, you know, it takes snow loads on top of it. Um, candidly, I think we have, we should, we should revise the drawing to show. Differently, we, the snow, so, and I, it wasn't totally overstated, it's not like my first rodeo.
Well, that's why I'm here.
But um, we do have that six spots where we definitely can put place now. So it was an overstep.
As long as you're there. The fifty-foot spot that we talked about last week, between the two properties. Um, have you talked to the town administrator yet to find out what? Are you guys gonna try to take the fee interest in the property or are you gonna try to get a, a uh permanent easement over the property? From the town to occupy? That fifty-foot spot.
So I'm out of my van here a little bit, um. We do have an attorney on this project, so I need the help of an attorney on that. We do not like that option, so.
What could be formal anuse?
I think that's probably what we were looking for is a new stuff.
But that, you can't get that for much, you're gonna have to get that from town administrator, I would think, right? It's just at this point, it's represented that you have three parking spots. And the, and the, so, I mean, if this gets approved. It would probably have to be subject to your, get possession of that. Um, you got the traffic, if you just quickly, uh, we talked about the East Coast, uh, two twenty-three. I don't think anybody had any problem with that, we understand that going ships in and out. Um, you're gonna talk to Steve Severia about the, uh. Again, because there is an offset. Okay, we just put a free opinion from him, that is that gonna be okay, or is that gonna be problematic?
Okay.
The other issue is. Um, I don't know if you guys ever looked at this here, but. Still a structure right there.
Oh, yeah. In fact. He has made some modifications of the sight line, still comment.
Yes.
That's before we were, when we were moving.
So beautiful, why don't we get?
I'm a little further over.
The, the railroad? Which, what do you?
We're talking about the cabinet.
Yep.
You know, it's roughly a five foot by eight foot metal railroad, it's a railroad signaling gate cabinet.
It's actually the thing that, that controls the gate.
No, that's.
Right.
But the issue is it's three feet off the sidewalk. So if the traffic engineer would look at it, for egressing traffic coming out. You got the traffic coming around Main Street on the curve, coming towards the tracks, are they gonna have enough sightline visibility?
Okay.
When they, with your people, make the left hand turn out.
I see, I see.
You see what I'm saying?
I do, absolutely.
It's just a question.
Right.
We want to have Steve, I stopped whether there's a pipeline visibility issue with that cabinet being there. It might not be, it's a function of the speed of the traffic, it's a function of the, the curve, the distance from the curve coming down to the track.
It's. Conrad, really, that's, that's no worse than the one we just dealt with at Starbucks. The transformer.
Same though.
Uh, a lot less, that one was right on the road. This, this one's way back. Sidewalk, which is four feet.
Then there's three feet back from there.
It's on the other side of the, the gate post.
The, the gate, the gate post is not the problem.
Okay.
It may not be a problem, all I'm saying is Steve Severia from Fossett O'Neill.
Yep.
Should make a, an opinion on whether there's a sufficient sightline visibility. For traffic egressing from this property, making a left turn out, when traffic has come up around the curve and coming down towards the tracks. He can do analysis just to make sure there's not sightline visibility.
Can he, can he maybe go there at sunset too? See how it's gonna be to take a left-hand turn out there?
We're, we're not traffic.
We can shield the sun. Right?
I just drive by there all the time, the sun's right in your eye.
We just need the traffic engineer to assert.
Yep.
It's safe. That blank space between the train and train tracks that we stayed awhile, we took care of that. Um, on your west side of your buildings, on the west side of the building, you've got your, um. Those decks off the back.
Yes, right.
Right, so those decks there, okay, so then on the west side of building, they're within the ten-foot setback.
They're within ten foot, ten, seven.
So is a deck, it's elevated, it's not a patio deck, it's a constructed, either wood or among the material. It's a constructed deck within the setback.
I believe that's permitted by, by years old, I believe it is. But I will tell you this, if it's not, we will make it happen.
Yeah, if it's on the ground, I don't think there'd be an issue, if it's a constructed. Constructed deck on it.
Yeah.
It's his only enforcement officer. Question, again, I'm just raising the issue, the question.
All right, he makes the setbacks.
Yeah. So that, you'll make that decision.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, the last thing I got here is on your photometrics.
Yeah.
And I think we all agree the photometrics on everything was, was good. Was not any splash over the property lines and anything, but when you look at the photometrics at the, at the primary driveway. It's kind of thin. I'm wondering if we should be looking at and have an increase.
Not quite, you're talking about the lighting?
Lighting.
Yeah.
Primary driveway.
Oh, okay.
It's pretty thin in that. Right there where the driveway is. I'm just wondering, should it be enhanced lighting at the primary driveway?
Anything municipal right through there?
I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, your concern is?
Right at the driveway, right there.
Right, right.
The photometrics on that side right there.
Right.
Are very.
So obviously, these are underneath the top. Underneath the yard.
Right, right.
So what you're suggesting is that could we add in some lighting more?
I'm thinking, well, the way I look at it, it looks like it's pretty thin there, pretty dimmed.
Okay.
Um.
Like brighter lights.
Yeah, and it's not like it's impacting present area.
Even face it on the, basically a building.
Right, right.
Yeah, no, I think that's a, you're right, I believe that's an oversight.
Could I jump in on that question?
Sure.
Uh, on the sidewalk, are we gonna use the period lighting like it's on Main Street? You know, the, the posts with the new lights that we have, is it gonna be on the sidewalks also up there?
This is all on this property, right?
This is on the property.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying we're putting, we're not asking the town to put. Put in period lighting at the sidewalk. We're asking the applicant to add additional lighting on their property, be it. From the building or up another road.
At the carport area.
Maybe it could be around the carport area, so it's, it's more enhanced lighting at the driveway for ingress and egress. That, yeah, I mean, it's something they, they can do simply.
So what are the lights that are shown on the sidewalk on West Center Street?
Those are bollocks, those are low-bollock lighting, that's on our site. Um, we are, it's not within our jurisdiction to indicate what you're doing on public sidewalk.
Right. So the lighting has to be done, accomplished on their, either on their building, one of, one or another, uh. Uh, light station.
So these are low-bollocks.
Okay.
Four feet five.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be much, it's just, it's pretty dim right now.
There is gonna be lighting on the building itself. You know, at the entrances and so forth.
So just to be clear, there's the town's lighting, which is on the, on the road.
Right.
Then there will be your bollocks.
Right.
Further inside.
Your town lighting is the building light. There, there are full lights. Right, and there will be some lighting that relates to the entrances of the building, we're not doing any lighting that. Lights up the cook, otherwise we're not doing. So we're not doing uplighting because that's night sky problem. And yeah, I mean, I think our architecture is okay, but we're not. Not trying to make a big plan, we're not gonna play it up.
It's all gonna happen.
Okay, Dan? Good for now. Dave?
Uh, I'm pretty much covered, the only thing I'm gonna ask about in the enhanced crosswalk. Uh, that includes a light. Roll, lights.
Great. I, I'm not a traffic engineer, so it's one of the things that Steve Severia, although I have to admit it may not be Steve Severia. It'll, Fossett O'Neill is the, so. Um, I'm sure you've seen them where the people on either side, they get there, they can push a button. It starts with.
We have my old truck.
Yeah, starts at the flash and you can walk around, that's what. I believe is an appropriate solution.
Okay.
Um. I, I'm kind of a little surprised that, and all the comings and goings, we don't know that this hasn't. Been addressed before, but.
There was, talked about it when. In the original plans.
Yep.
When everything, when the hotel was across the street.
Okay, yeah.
So things changed.
No hotel, now we have this.
Uh, the only thing I hope that Jeff, that you can work with the neighbors. I realize you can't give the world away, but uh. If we can keep them happy. Yeah, I, I realize that, but you could do it through the street too.
Under construction and more successful. Temporal.
Yeah.
Wouldn't say, has I done years. Now they can see.
Guys, it's time. That's good for me, I'm, I'm also. Hey, Peter?
I think the lighting thing was, was a good call, but I wanna say. One of the things that we frequently run into on a lot of projects. Is overlaying in the parking area, so that all of a sudden it looks like, I don't know, a shopping center. And we're trying to not do that, we are meeting, uh, one moment, one foot candle. Throughout the whole driving area at least. Which is, I think, what you stipulate in your policy, so we. I think it's more than adequate and. And.
Southside streets and to shoot.
Take you down.
Off of the street by.
To any, to the windrush percentage of the hospital projects. And it's also the product, the, the, the lighting we're doing is not ultra sleek modern, it's, you know, and we can submit. Uh, literature on the, on the fixtures that are.
Peter?
Uh, yeah, hold on a second, uh, I wanna thank you again for these further modifications. That look like they've added detail to the front face that reflects the historic character of the town better than. The somewhat, but not fully detailed plan you submitted last time. Uh, so thank you for that.
Okay.
I was, I wanna ask you to review for me the parking issue. Um, and you've mentioned that you have some, uh, a few parking spaces that are, I think you said a hundred to sixty square feet.
They're a little less.
A little bit less.
Yeah.
What is the standard for this board to approve that is, are we allowed under our bylaw to approve that? Or is it, is it discretionary?
I believe it is discretionary, but.
Yeah. I, I'm just not that familiar with the parking regulations.
Okay, regulations are in the downtown corridor. That the parking space has to be one hundred and sixty square feet. So it doesn't say has to be eight by twenty or nine.
So it's a hundred and sixty times the number of units in this case, is that it?
No, the annual space.
Each space has to self individually.
And all the spaces here are that, except. We are. Mostly it's at the turnings, like this first space is not, this place is not. Um, it's, it's more at the turning places, or you're sort of trying to cut them down. And I will say, I think I stated this last time. In, in, in Boston, for instance. The standard parking space is eight and a half by eighteen, which is considered less than a hundred and sixty square feet. And, and the compact spots are seven foot six by sixteen. We're proposing eight by eighteen for the compact box.
So I just wanna make sure that if we try to approve this project. That we would be on sound legal footing, so. We could, we can approve smaller parking spaces under our bylaw.
I guess I, I, I will, I will have to seek some counsel and discuss. Brooke and so forth, so.
Wait, let, let's, do you have the bylaw handy? You, you probably need your lawyer. Yeah, okay, all right, I'll, I'll deal with it myself, okay.
No, I mean, we, we can try to.
I think we do, uh, but I wanna make sure I'm in the right place.
You have discretion on this, but.
Yeah.
I'm an architect, not an attorney, but, um.
So board members in, uh, in our bylaw. Section one ninety-nine dash eight point three. Uh. It says unless otherwise specifically set forth herein or approved by the planning board. Required parking facilities shall contain not less than the area shown below. So that implies to me that the planning board can approve.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the signs as, as submitted. But I wanna submit that for discussion if anybody thinks I'm in the wrong place or have missed something.
No.
And also. Spots nine by eighteen? Your regular parking spots are nine by eighteen?
Yes.
Is that what you've got specked out?
Yes.
That's a conventional spot.
Which is, which is. Which is just greater than a hundred and sixty.
One sixty-two, I think, yeah.
And and that's out of the seventy-four class, that's six, fifty-eight.
Thank you, Nick.
We also have the smart growth. Well, we couldn't use any, any either or. Okay, you all set, Peter?
Yes.
Guess we'll. Yes, Peg is a board member.
Yes, I wasn't able to be here tonight due to illness. However, she called me earlier and wanted to be on record that. She would like a full traffic study. There was a bad accident here, Domino's yesterday, and she's concerned about traffic.
Okay. And I think we've already. Dealt with that unfortunately, so. That it's not required. Okay, um, Gordon will start with you.
Okay, sorry. Yeah, I didn't expect that to get turned so fast. Alright. All all the board members, I didn't hear anything from Dave. Did, I'm sorry, I mean, missed it.
Uh, he asked about um the enhanced crosswalk.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I got that. I got that. I thought that was Dan. That was Dave. No, I'm just keeping notes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you. You wanna do the people who are there in person first? Or no?
Um, I'm hoping that maybe some of your stuff will cover their questions. That's why I went to you.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Uh, I appreciate your time. Um, one thing was when the um when the floodplain thing came up, uh, and you had the. You had the plan shown on screen, you're talking about a red line and a green line. Well, none of that showed up on on the screen. So I have no idea uh where the red line was and the green line. I assume that's in the planning board office where I could go and see a hard copy with a red line and a green line. I just didn't happen to see it. It's not in color on the screen.
Gotcha.
It's just a question. So I can go to the planning board's office and I can see it as a red line or a green line. Okay.
Yep, he's got one now, still have it.
That's fine, no, no problem. Uh, I'll. Hope that the.
It'll be online with the main plan.
Yep, very good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Back to the um. The um planting issues. I had a couple of questions for the um. Planting person, I don't know if they wanna be there to answer. Cause I'm looking at the the proposed planting schedule. I'll let you get it up. Thanks. Nope, there you go. Nope, back one. There you go. That that's a great one. Thank you. A couple of things. Number one, I know that there's spruces that are. Supposed to be planted between the Domino's and the storage people, and boy, it looks like a lot of them. Uh, my question to put on the record is what is the sprace, what is the type of spruce? What exactly is it? And what is the spacing? That's gonna be provided, so that's one question. The other is about your community garden. Um, are they, does, looks like there's nine community garden spaces. Are they raised beds? And are they in the ground beds? Um, and also, where's the water? That's gonna be shown for people to be able to water their gardens. Uh, is there an outdoor spigot there? Uh, what's the control on it? That kind of thing. Just wondering what's happening with that. Let me go back to only, let me turn the page here, only the um. Oak trees, oak trees um that are in the front of it. Um, in again, what's the spacing on these oak trees? What's the brand and the the genus of them? Um, and it looks like from one of the pictures you showed further on that. The branches, in fact, will be impeding the sidewalk space. So I'm wondering about that. How high did they get before they actually start impeding on the sidewalk space? Because you got like almost no distance from the sidewalk to the front of these buildings to be able to put a tree into. Uh, next question, um, tree maintenance and periodic review by the board. I know in um. When we did the Oak and Spruce um development many, many, many years ago. Um, we had a condition, so this is a potential condition for the board to consider. Um, we had, uh, every two years, we did, uh, the select board did an actual onsite walking periodic review. Of the um maintenance of the landscaping. And the grounds to make sure that, you know, if as things died, that they were actually replaced. Um, and that was up to the board's, well, that that permit was under the select board. So it was the select board's decision as to whether they were keeping their maintenance up on their plantings. And trees, and I would suggest that the board consider. Uh, some type of review, especially uh of the plantings. Uh, we have a heck of a time here with some of our neighbors um who said, oh, yeah, no, natural. Naturally, everything's gonna grow up, but it doesn't. In the winter, everything's exposed. Um, the other concern I had backing up to the. The trees between the building and the Domino's site. Not, uh, they were spruces, but it seemed to me there was something else there too that that um. I'm worried about the height of those eventually blocking the people's view out of their first and second floor apartments. I don't think we have to worry about third floor apartments, but I think the first and second, I I know that they grow slowly. But eventually, this is forever. And so I think the board every couple of years ought to go and just make sure that. Things are being handled right from that end. Another issue on the community garden, I did mention the water issue and whether they are raised beds. Um, the playground. Uh, according to the sketch, it looks like they got like four things, maybe a slide, a couple seesaws, and that's maybe a jungle gym. I'm wondering if they could please provide, uh, if they've got fifty kids or more. What are they providing for playground equipment? That doesn't look like it's anywhere near. Able to take into account the number of children that are gonna be there. So that was also a question. Um, and a question generally for the developer is, is this. Gonna be owned and maintained by the CDC of but of South Berkshire? Is this a homeowners association? Who is going to be responsible for all these plantings and replantings should the. Should the planning board decide to actually go and review these every couple of years and find that the um. Everything's dying, they're not being maintained, and you're gonna order them to redo them. Who who do you talk to? Uh, the CDC of Southern Berkshire, or is there a homeowners association? Just if that could be. Uh, kinda clarified, including keeping up the painting of the parking spaces. I'm gonna jump ahead to one of the things a board member mentioned.
Hey, Gordon. Gordon, Peter here. Um, Rebecca Lantier is standing up at the podium.
Sure.
She's she's not taking notes and you're on question.
I am happy to slow down.
Okay, alright, so I I'm not gonna do this in order.
That's okay.
Okay, yeah, so the this the spruce on the uh. Is it the north side here?
Yeah, yeah, west side, yeah.
Yeah, on the west side. Okay, so those are um. Those are Picea abes cupuchina. So they they like full sun, they are very narrow, um, and. Like really narrow, like five to six feet wide.
Okay.
Um, so yes, over time, eventually, they could definitely. Um, be up to second or third floor. Um, but the idea is they also will stick scale with the building. What am I doing?
I just had to plug my.
So the, so the, the idea was try to scale with some of the height of this building is, or the thing, it's really tall, so. Trying to get some higher things in there was it was a goal. Um, when they're pyramid, the higher they get, the narrower they get. So the Picea will become very narrow, the same with the the taxes that are right in front of them. So those are the um, the taxes, cuspidata, catatata. So, can you hear me over all the rustling?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Um, so they will get, um, they'll they'll be shorter than the. Picea, but they could get up to ten to twenty-five feet high eventually. There's quite slow growing right here.
Moving.
And about five to ten feet wide. So as they grow, yes, they they will um. Be visible from the second and third floor, I would imagine, but I also think that um. That uh. The battery.
Not plugged in, right?
Still need to.
Yeah, move it right. There you go.
I'm just waiting for you guys to get set.
Okay, it's like it's working now. It's charging again. Yes, it's just gonna keep doing that. Um, so anyway, so there there, again, they're a pyramid form, so they'll get narrower as they get taller, so. Um, they they won't be as, they won't really give the visual screen. Like once you get to second and third floor, you're gonna see.
I think the issue is as they get taller, they're gonna appear to be not as wide. They don't, they don't shrink, right? They don't shrink in.
Not shrink. They don't know, because they shouldn't be pruned.
Right.
And long, so they would not shrink, nope.
So a question, oh, a question on the um, uh, the West Center Street side. I noticed that um you had some trees there. Again, my concern is how are you gonna keep these from interfering the walkway? With the.
Yeah.
In the sidewalk, because as I noticed on two or three other uh screens that you did a shot of the. Um, railroad crossing and looking across the front of the building, it looked like the limbs of the tree. Were actually over and in intruding into the sidewalk space. So is that a matter of someone that's going to be hired by? Or maybe it's something conditioned that the board has to put on there that you have somebody come in and actually. Uh, keep that pruned back, so it's not an obstruction in the public way.
I I think, yeah, I I think that's valid, a valid point, and um. I was actually speaking to a grower in uh North Petersburg, New York, who's been a grower for. Over forty years and and he's the one who recommended the um, the Quercus crimson spire. Um, he said he's been growing it for thirty years and it's still not even twelve feet wide. So when I actually put fifteen feet wide, I was, I was going with what I was hearing on the internet, but from an actual grower on the ground. He said they're just, they just take forever to get wide. So they they're just a very narrow tree, so that was part of the choice is they have the height. But they don't have the width. So so basically what I'm saying is that um. You know, it can be, it can be implanted with that in consideration with, you know. Um, if we, if we think that we only have a six foot or a seven foot distance to the sidewalk, you can push the trees in a little closer to the building even. But if you're worried about clearance and stuff, but I think that that's just not gonna be a problem for a really long time. We're not even growing this in a field where they have terrific growing conditions. We're growing this. In an area where there's gonna be salt and compaction, so they're, they're really gonna grow pretty slowly.
Okay, no, uh, thank you. Um, you know, my my concern is that. This building is so darn close to the public right away anyway.
Yeah.
That you really don't have a lot of, you know, you got about five feet to put a tree in. Um, if you want halfway from the building.
Yeah, there is, there's ten feet, yeah.
So so are you telling me there's twenty feet between the public way and the building?
No, there's, there's, there's a ten foot space to grow in.
So so if you plant in the middle, you got five feet toward the building and five feet toward. It just seems like that's tight and that the board should at least have a condition eventually. Where they revisit the situation to see, especially about the trimming of the issues to keep. To keep so it won't have people like right next to the traffic pattern. That that's all.
Think that would, that would fall under the landscape maintenance, right?
Uh, well, I would hope, I would hope the board would um. Uh, put it in as a condition. Um, so that you can actually go and revisit the situation and not have it just be, okay, CDC, it's up to you. And then everything gets out of control, possibly. I'm not saying that they're not gonna be on top of it. But the board has a lot of rights to put conditions on all this stuff. So as far as the landscape goes, I'm just trying to flip my page. I got like four sheets of paper here. With some.
About the community garden space, the.
Yes, yeah, what's happened for that and water supply? A raised bed or what is it?
They they're, they're actually going to be uh little carrels, their their wood frame with the cross legs below them. So they're set up at about uh thirty-six inch, about counter height. Uh, so the people can work on them and they're, they come in different sizes, from three by, three by four to three by ten. And we we to be, to say that we finalize the exact layout, we haven't done that. We are proposing to have a yard hidden there and to be able to water directly.
Okay, good. Well, that, that'll be metered by and billed off to the CDC.
Yeah, it it will be part of the water bill, the the, the CDC pays for the entire water bill.
Right. There's actually, there's a little more space if you give the playground or the community space where the, where we have. We're talking about making that one sense, so that'll add another five feet to either one of those spaces.
I mean, candidly, I think those are drawing quite large right now, more in the order of four by eight or four by six.
Yeah.
I think they're gonna be considerably smaller and opportunities for more.
Yeah, well, again, I think that that, again, I would suggest to the board, they need to have that on a condition where they go and review that every couple of years. To make sure it's being maintained and actually supplied. Because, you know, eventually those things rot out and as long as they're gonna be replaced. And taken care of so that it's a long term.
We got it, Gordon.
Okay, no.
We got a lot of people in the room too, can we um?
I I would say.
That I wanna get to.
I I will step back and you go, and I still have things to talk about, so I, that's why I asked if you wanna do everybody in the room first, but.
Well.
Mister Chairman, sorry. I will be quiet for the moment.
No, just let's keep moving through it, and um I think there was a question who, who we talk to. With these, with any issues, and that's CDC.
So, yeah, so. I mean, when you come to a water bill. There's laws about how the water bill. Has to be paid by the building owner, not the tenant. Uh, when it comes to a playground and the specific equipment that's in it and community gardens and the specific layout of that. Um, that is the kind of thing that we like to work with the tenants. Line wise, and then we tend to work with. Uh, the community partners to help fund. So again, I don't think the specifics of that is something that this board wants to determine. I think that's a latitude we wanna give. To the, the owners and occupants of the building. Uh, as far as the owners. Uh, management of the building is concerned. We are working, we are currently negotiating a joint venture partnership. We're talking to about four or five. Uh, very well regarded regional uh entities. Each has a slightly different way that they like to partner. Some like to bring their own management team. Some prefer that we bring a third party management team, so that hasn't been determined. The ownership of the building. Tends to stay with the non-for-profit that is developing the building, which would be us, that's certainly. Preference, but again, it's a subject of negotiation. Uh, all the management of the building is. Betted by the state as we submit our application for funding.
Yeah.
And we won't get funding unless we have a well-regarded and qualified building management team in place. And so again, I don't think that that is. The minutia that the board wants to get into. I also don't think respectfully that you have the expertise that the state does regarding that. Uh, as far as getting on site on a periodic basis to check to see that we're maintaining it, you can join the list of people that come on site to. Make sure that we're maintaining the building. We have no objection to it.
Um, so we're trying to.
Yep.
I don't, I don't know why.
Yeah, Gordon, is there anything other big you wanted to?
Sure, a couple of big things, just some, uh, number one, I I want the board to make sure that you understand that. You can't, as a special permit granting authority, you can't. Put approval of this special permit should you choose to uh do it. You can't put it, put it contingent on approval by conservation or approval by some other board. All those things have to be done prior, even if you have to just continue this to waiting until those things happen. If you talk to the town attorney, you'll find that you, you're kinda handcuffed to not putting things contingent on some other board. not putting things contingent on some other board before you can uh issue your final permit, like you can't say, well, we'll approve this as long as Conservation Commission does. Conservation Commission's gotta do it, and they've gotta give you the list of everything, including the ZVA, you're the final clearinghouse. So I think you need to check um and make sure that you don't step on your toes on that. Um so I I mean, I'm willing to give a, well, as far as this traffic, I we don't need more red lights in town, so if you have an enhanced crosswalk where you're just pushing a button and some white lights flash, I got no problem with that. But I certainly don't wanna see some red light again, we already.
Nobody was mentioning that.
Uh somebody mentioned it earlier.
Gordon, can I ask you to stop at this Conservation Commission?
Yes, sir.
Sounding to me like you said two different things there, and I wanna clarify them if I can, one is you said we should not say that it would be approved contingent upon the Conservation. I don't think there's any risk that we would do that, I don't think we've ever done anything like.
They still need to approve before we can do the final.
That was a second statement, and I wanted to know what your authority was for that.
Um well, if you check on zoning law, uh Peter, I can get that to you. You'll find that um it's very clear that any special permit granting authority can't give their approval contingent on some other what's considered a minority board almost. Um uh to uh for their approval, they have to approve first and then it goes to you, and you guys go, yeah, okay, great, you bent through and.
So you're you're saying that we are, we cannot under state law approve this tonight if we wish to, because we have not heard from the Conservation Commission?
That's my understanding, you can always continue at one for two weeks and check with another municipal attorney. I think ours is out of town for two weeks, unfortunately. Um yeah, I'm not trying to hold things up, I'm not trying to hold up things, I'm just saying I have a point of if you get appealed, then you know, then there may be trouble, so you wanna.
Mr. Harwood, Mr. Harwood raises his hand, he'd like to say.
Yeah, sure.
Again, not an attorney, but I will point out that we also need a building firm. And this, that will come after this. So you may be able to approve it not contingent on the weapons approval, we'll still need to get the weapons approval because we won't get the building firm without the well.
Yeah, when are you scheduled for Concom?
We, I don't know that we're currently scheduling.
Or ZVA.
There's ZVA.
So, miss, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yeah.
Gordon, my recollection is when Eagle Mill came up.
Yeah.
Planning Board acted first. And there were no conditions about Concom or ZVA. And that occurred not only with Eagle, it occurred similarly with the original hotel plan. Because if either of the other commissions didn't approve what was asked of them, say Concom project didn't go anywhere. It it didn't matter that the planning board had approved it. As to the planning Board's responsibilities, you can't approve anything relating to the Concom.
Or the building firm.
Or the building for or anything for another Board or Commission. But I believe you could approve as and when it comes up, whatever is asked of you, you can also turn it down. But if you approve it, it certainly doesn't forecast an approval by a Concom or by ZVA, they act independently of you, you're independent of them. And when the project's brought to them, they don't like it, it stops. And that is Eagle Mills' experience, I believe, both as to the primary Eagle Mills site. And if you'll recall, as to the site of the proposed hotel. Remember, we had to go to Concom, there were helical or whatever they're called, little uh coils or screws and all all that should be done independent of the planning and parkings and and what, and ZVA had to approve something else independent, so that's what I think it is, I think that's what you've done.
So what I what I'm trying to impress on the board is you can't make your approval conditional, conditional on someone else's approval.
Right.
Everybody agrees with you, Gordon.
We got you, yeah, yeah, we we approve our part of it, Concom will have their part, ZVA will have their part.
And you you do not, the building department also can issue a permit without conservation approval, I know that's a shock to everybody, but but it's true because there again, the Conservation Commission has their own legal authority to go stop construction should someone be in violation of the conservation law, so I I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to say that. Um so why don't you move on to other people there, and I have a couple other quick questions, and um I will come back with them.
The full room, we might not get to you, so.
No, that's fine, I hope you continue to another week, I'm too important a project to approve tonight. Too important a project to approve tonight.
Now, well, okay, um Kathy, quick.
Yes.
What do you have?
Um just something in terms of the pollinators, um just a concern, and concern doesn't mean I'm for or against something, um allergies, young children, you know, getting stung by a bee or whatever, uh concern about that. Also, just a hu- humor type of thing, um just because I lived down that street for more than seventy years. Um you made reference, you know, just a little sense of humor of but not knowing my perspective, sitting on one side of the street looking at another side. Um the view being obstructed by a tall building, that, you know, that's it, but another piece of humor um with the apples. Apple trees produce lots and lots of apples, and people have always come into our yard to pick the apples. They also came into our yard to pick our hollyhocks, so this is just, you know, things that you don't really think about when you're putting up a project, but things that really do happen. And in terms of the playground, there are state regulations as to the spacing of the different um equipment within the playground. Also, we're working, the youth commission's working on the uh basketball court at the athletic field, and we just found out we can't just um replace the backboard, we have to do the whole pole, the backboard, the net and the um hoop, and just one costs three thousand dollars, but.
Okay.
So just to let you know that there are all these little components that people need to think about in terms of it, and also I appreciate that you read the letter um from the people, I wish you could have given us a summary of Ann Langlis's um letter. Um I wanted to thank you and the board for having these people come. It makes much more sense to be able to see these things, um I liked what um Nick and Rebecca had to say, and also the representative from SK Design, it made more sense. And certainly we need um more apartments um here in Lee. Um we have a beautiful town, we just need to keep the character, and you keep talking about the master plan. And within that master plan, it says to keep the character of our town, it doesn't mean stop progress. But it does mean keep the character, thank you so much.
Thank you, Kathy.
Just actually speak to a couple of things, the letter that was mentioned. Um wildlife was mentioned and and losing habitat as well as this monolith of a building being put in, so both of those things are actually being addressed with this landscape design. Using trees, planting the the trees near the building and creating this sort of forest-like setting is is actually supposed to help with that sense of scaling to this height of the building, so it won't feel like such a monolith, it's gonna be more visible from the east side, because we just don't have the space on the west side for that, even though we are trying to put some trees in that will give us some height to scale against a very tall building. Um but we're also, all of these trees are native, so they're they they've been here, you know, they've been, they've been selected and they've been, they, you know, they're cultivars, some of them, but um they they are things that will flow here that are part of the forests that we see, especially the birch trees. Um I have to say that Norway spruce is not native, but there is a big Norway species there right now, so um we're just sort of, you know, going along with that same theme. And allergies, you know, the things that cause allergies are not necessarily things that are on this planting list, things that are called cause allergies are white pine pollen and ragweed and and grass seed pollen, so it's not necessarily anything that's gonna be in this planting that's gonna cause more prob- pollen problems, so. Um and I hope that it would actually create a great environment for for birds and lots of other mammals and things, it's gonna be a pretty interesting place to grow up, actually.
It is.
We're also adding quite a bit more landscape and certain trees than there are on the site now.
There's very little, yeah.
I mean, there's
Lot of projects.
Seven trees on the entire state right now.
Yeah.
Um field that kinda gets mowed maybe once a year or something, it's a good form, yeah, very poorly maintained.
I think so, except to calling building a monolith, we had a highly articulated building. Uh it's not a black base at all, uh it has varieties of heights, it has it has days on it, and and I I think it's trying to address, you know, the issues that we've discussed with.
I think so. All right, um here we go, gonna open it up to the gallery now.
Let's move it.
Yep, if you wanna, if you wanna speak, please come up to the podium, speak your name, your address, and uh let us know if you have to say. Yep. There we go.
Where? Can we just make sure that people online can still hear us?
Gordon's gone.
Still here is Gordon?
He's gone.
We can hear you, I can hear you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Louis Carpresso, I live on forty five Canal Street. I have a couple of concern, one concern is the emergency exit on Canal Street, I think that's what the call in emergency. How do you control that? How do you know they won't use that exit? This, you said there's parking seventy-four cars, right?
Yep.
I, I'm old and retired and I sit on my porch, you know, my house, a great big yellow house right there. And I have my coffee in the morning, and I watch forty-foot tractor trailers come down one after another going to dresser hall. I see cars kinda come out, they have to back up to let the tra- trailers go by, and that stops about four o'clock. So, and also seventy-four cars, and this gentleman mentioned the children playing. Guess what? The children grow up, guess what teenagers want? A car. So there you go, think about that, okay, so more cars there. Anyway, I'm concerned about exiting on Canal Street now. Last night I went to go out and I couldn't get out of Canal Street because there were so many cars at Lucky's, I had to go through the pizza pickup cart to get out onto the main street, so if those cars on Canal Street, when that thing is built, come out, what a mess that's gonna be, and the chief left. I'm going to fire station more to talk to him about, can't get out at night. And you said there was an accident last night, I heard, well, there've been several accidents, and several accidents there. That's one concern, the other concern is I don't understand the water, I'm not an engineer. Uh we have drainage right now, as you know, coming on the Canal Street. You're just saying, he said it's a twelve-inch pipe, all that water goes down a twelve-inch pipe, I'm afraid that we are, we'll get back up on my street, maybe not. But that, those are my two concerns, is exiting on Canal Street and the water. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you, you're welcome. Your service. Uh okay, Scott?
Hi, I'm Scott Lee Poh, and actually I have three pieces of property that are kinda all in and around, it's two forty-four Main, two fifty Main and fifty fifty-six Canal Street. Not opposed to bringing more housing into the area, however, I think that this portion of the town that is being so impacted by all the building that's going in and what is proposed to go in in the future, really should be like a town decision, I mean, I don't know, and that's that's kinda where I'm here, is this, is this going to go before a town?
Well, we, you you said that, um we talked about this before the meeting, and how our bylaws are written, a proposal like this the the permit granting authority is the planning board.
Okay.
So if we just go and decide, oh, it's gonna go to a town meeting, that's Sidland Court right away. We can't do that, we we have, it has to be decided here.
So the final decision, so really the town doesn't have to say, but the boards within the town.
The boards within the town on this one, yes, there's certain things, like if the town was gonna buy a piece of this, that is a you know, a a town decision, you know, or when the town sells a piece of property, stuff like this. But how the zoning laws are are written and how our, all our bylaws are written, there are certain things that the boards take care of.
Okay.
You know, Concom has their ZVA, like you heard, the select board have certain things, and this one uh we have.
I just hope then the boards take some serious consideration, knowing, you know, the amount of additional traffic, people, pedestrians, it's gonna be in that core town, you know? Cause all this, this, the whole town, it's still, as far as I know, a future proposal?
No.
That's definitely.
Hotel's gone, oh. Yeah, this is where the hotel was was gonna be.
No, I'm sorry, the the boutique hotel that's still shown in some of their entrances. No hotel, okay, the additional parking, it's gonna be beyond, not not the parking, but the additional apartments beyond the mill structure that you're working on right now, that's still.
That's all part of the blue site plane on the four yard.
Okay, so, so.
For Eagle Mill.
We don't lose track of, you know, additional parking coming into that space, there's there's gonna be a lot of impact on the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I don't disagree that we don't need housing, you know, I just don't know if the amount of it that we're trying to cluster in that one area is right. Needs to do it.
Hey Scott?
Yes.
I just say, um I haven't done any research on this at all, but um one of the things, the way way zoning works is you sort of, you try to get people notice in advance of what the rules are. So they try to comply, and then if they met the rules, you gotta give them right to build. If we had a rule that said town gets to vote on any project, you know, it wouldn't, it would probably be unconstitutional. I'm saying that without any research, but it would be a due process issue there about the taking of property subject to, you know, the whim of the town.
Yeah, and I understand that, but this is probably, I would say, the most impactful project that Lee has ever undertaken in that section, other than the the Eagle Mill.
That's right.
Eagle Mill is bigger.
No, no, but I mean, that this, in this one section of town, I agree, it's big.
It is.
And and I don't, I don't know if if people had really got their head around it before this thing is already a done deal and and construction starts.
Well, it's not a done deal until everybody who needs to approve it approves it, and we have to vote it, so.
Okay.
Thanks for your thoughts.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Anyone else? Okay.
I I'm not sure.
Oh, okay. You'll be.
Why did you wait, cause there's somebody.
Let her, yeah. Come on up.
How are you, gentlemen?
But, fine.
You heard me before.
Name it, yep, name and address just for the.
Josephine Carpresso, forty-five Canal Street. Love my, I love my town. I love where they're, but I gotta tell you. Sixty-nine, that big, why does it have to be so big? It looks like a hotel, why? And why do they have to put three stories behind us? I don't understand that. Three stories over a two-story house, why? I wouldn't like, I don't like it, would you like that in your backyards? Looking over? No, nobody would. It's it's our peace, it's our time, it's our home, we bought it, we love it. We decided to stay there, I wanted to stay there until I die, God forbid, when the time comes. So do you, Lord, anyway.
Are you telling them?
You know, you know, so the thing is you have to do something with those three stories, and and the size of it, it feels like sardines, it feels, you stand there, we stand there, it feels like we're gonna be clunched in. That's what it feels like, doesn't matter the size, it doesn't matter what it is, as long as it's in there, and we're doing our thing, it's great. It can't, yeah, you gotta think of the other little people alongside with it. You know, we sit out there, we know, we know what's going by, we know what's happening, and our, you know. And that's, I'm sorry, I know you wanted to put a hotel there before. It didn't, whatever happened, whatever happened, now feel like you. It didn't, whatever happened, whatever happened, now feel like you're moving the hotel down. And you're making it something different. That's how I feel, I'm sorry. And that's how we actually, that's how I feel.
But, yeah. Okay.
So that was me, and I'll be glad to sign the petition anytime you need.
I think, did you already get it?
Uh, no, I gave it back, I gave it to you, but you said it wasn't signed, so I just wanted to let you know.
Okay, oh, no, the, the cover letter, we, it was unknown writer, but you were the writer?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, you know, the light, oh. Two cars, you're saying your family only has one car? Husband and a wife, they have two. When I was getting, I had my children, I had two, not to mention, when my daughter got to an age of driving, we got her a car. How old are the kids are gonna be there? How long are they gonna be there? That's the thing, I have no wants on children, if I have them myself. Grandchildren, nieces and nephews. Okay, but I know for a fact that when they get to an age, they want a car, I know for a fact. We have two cars. You gotta go somewhere, Louis's not gonna ride a bike, we have two cars. So where is the second car is it gonna go to? Where is the third car gonna go to when it happens? You're gonna be parked along Canal Street in the back, I don't, I don't see that, so. That's the questions I'd like. And I would like to know, why do you have to put those houses behind our houses? Is it a must? Is it a big thing? You've already got that big thing going out there, and you gotta put those three stories over our backyards and over our homes? That's terrible, I know everybody's looking at me going, whoa, I don't know what the big deal, it is a big deal. It is a big deal. So, that's all I'm gonna say, gentlemen, I don't wanna say anymore because I'm getting upset, and I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, George.
Thank you, thanks for listening.
Thank you for your time. Jeff, you have something?
Uh, I would just like to address some of the issues that a number of people have brought up. Um. Because I don't think. They're pertinent to the process that you're charged with enforcing and, uh, deciding. Everybody complains about the density, it's too big, it's too tall. But the town had an opportunity, they want to decide that it didn't want a building. Of this size or of this use in this location. It created a master plan. Properly zoned, which enabled a building in general terms. Of this size on this site. And we were careful not to build it as a monolithic building. To step it back as you approach the single-family homes that are on Canal Street. But they're not that close, but they're in the neighborhood. And the building steps away from it, in terms of height, as it goes towards where height is more appropriate. On West Center Street. The town's plan. I want to say again, enables this. And if you didn't want it, you should have said no buildings above. On top of that, we do have a problem with affordable housing. Fire chief, the police chief, years ago, basically came in and said they couldn't afford a living tent, or their children. The town does not meet its legal requirement, where ten percent of its housing stock. To be deeded as affordable housing, so what does that mean? It essentially means if someone comes in with a reasonable plan, they skip talking to you guys, and they go to the state. Your forty B plan, and say, hey, you don't comply, we do. Let us build, and so far, most of these forty B plans get approved. We've tried, I've personally tried, just the opposite. From day one, and you all have seen it, because it's been before you for many, many years. Where we've come in, and we've said, we're trying to solve a problem. Of affordable housing in this town, because we can preserve character. Whether it's restoring parts of the mill, designing new buildings at the mill that are consistent with the architecture in and around town. Designing a building here, that reflects a lot of architectural elements of the town. We've done all that first, before we've come and said, please approve. We've met with everybody, one-on-one, so what do you want? We've tried to accommodate that. So I understand neighbors who don't like change. And I, and they are entitled to feel that way. And I probably feel that way myself, if someone was building an apartment building in my backyard. But there are options, move somewhere else, buy the land, so it doesn't get developed. But as long as that land's there, someone's gonna come in and develop it. And there's a good likelihood that they'll develop it for a different purpose, other than affordable housing, and then you've got a bigger problem. So I think that this proposal. Is the best that the town can hope to achieve. Because it solidifies the entrance into the town. In an architecture, in my opinion, in an architecturally appropriate way. Both as to the new buildings at the mill, and some of them have yet to be designed. You have placeholders on some of them, so you have new buildings at the mill, and you've got to cross the street. It completes one of the entrances into the town of Lee. In my judgment, in a very reasonable way, and in a very architecturally significant way. So as to when he asks the town. And let me just clarify two other issues, the hotel, everybody keeps wondering about or talking about them. We proposed a hotel in two thousand thirteen. With people that owned The Red Lion, if you'll recall. And it's gonna be fifty or forty-eight rooms. And essentially, The Red Lion said at that time, after studying it, and it was on the Eagle Mill site, where the old mill buildings are. And they said, too small, not economic. So then, years later, we came up with a plan for a hundred-room hotel. On this site, plus the pizza site, so it was all one big site. And we proposed a hundred-room hotel, hundred parking spaces, I think the planning board approved it. I know the ZBA approved it, and I know the Conservation Commission approved it. We hired the largest hotel consultancy firm in the United States. To study whether or not a hotel was feasible in the town of Lee at that site. And they said, basically, build it, and they woke up. And then COVID came, and every hotel developer we talked to. Red Lion and others basically said, we're done with hotels, no way we're building new ones, and that was years ago. So we didn't wanna let this, the town continue to suffer from what amounts to a vacant site. And we switched to more affordable housing, because we needed. And the last thing I would say, and Nick Elton's probably better. Uh, expert than I am, but my experience has been. When you comply with the parking requirement, one space per apartment on the site. Generally speaking, you don't have over-stacked parking occurring, but there's always. Empty spaces, and now we're talking about people who live in affordable housing. Not all of them can afford two cars. It's better to be walking distance from the hub of the town, any kind of public transportation that might exist. Than it is to promote the ownership and use of more than two cars, or at least two cars. And this building also brings them to the table, it's in a great location, so we don't need two cars necessarily. And it's not likely that the car, parking spaces are gonna, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jeff.
Made a remark. If we don't like it, we move. Why should we move? We've been there for years, paying our taxes, doing our things. So you want us to uproot everything because we don't like those large buildings you're putting behind us? That is not, that, I'm sorry, sir, that was an awful, awful way to put it. We're, we have feelings to our children, and we love this area. And this is Lee, when you're gonna come down, you're gonna see. I mean, I don't visit Springfield a lot, but you're gonna see Springfield. You'll have it, and you'll have everybody sliding out sardines, and you'll have your pretty little flowers and, and do everything, but we're not moving. I'm staying, that's my home. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But to say that.
I.
That, that was like a slap to everyone in the neighborhood. You wouldn't like it, send it to you.
Anyone else out there? Hey.
All right. Captain Gordon for volume two.
Um, he's gone.
Yeah.
You had it here.
Done? Come on up.
John Povol, I also own property along with my brother Scott on Canal Street and Main Street. Um, I think everybody's in agreement, we need more housing in the town, uh, I do think that it's. Excessively large for the size of space that's there. Um, I, I think everybody's concerned about how much traffic is gonna be on Canal Street. You know, that, it's a very tight road now, it's always. Beat up really bad, trucks turning the corners, is there any, any, uh. Due diligence on their part to, to try and alleviate any of that, if they're gonna have exit coming out of their property and. What about garbage trucks and that kinda stuff? Do they come in Main Street? Do they come down Canal Street and go in the back? How does that?
Well, ju- just quick, looking at this, I'm guessing garbage is, uh, be both. And one's gonna come right up Canal Street, see the plan?
Yeah, I, yeah, it wasn't, but there were things that might be a gated area and.
I. Oh, yeah.
I guess I'm just, just concerned about the access trucks and, and cars that are gonna be on that.
Well.
Making those sharp turns every day that are.
I mean, the busier dresser hall is, the more there is.
Yeah, there's done such a way, the garbage truck, and since you drive, it'll play back in. And this one is similar, so they drive through, drive out, back.
Gotcha.
All right, and the only other concern I have is, is water issues, we have a, our building is right on the corner there, and it's all blacktop. As long as there's adequate drainage for that parcel to, to get somewhere other than into the parking lots, that would be.
That's the engineer's job on that, they, they say it works, I, you know.
Okay.
That's a tough one, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, board, um, we had a couple of questions, I think, that are unresolved. Um, the line of sight on the entrance. Right, Conrad?
Yeah, I'd like to have the, uh, traffic engineer at least trust it.
Yeah. I, I think that's a very legitimate one. That has come up. Um, and the piece of town properties. I, I think that's a loose end that we really have to.
The wetter temp.
The, the.
Fifty foot.
The fif- that piece of town property, basically where the dumpster is, that's owned by the town. Um.
If for some reason they can't get possession of that fifty foot.
Yeah.
Then they would have to eliminate the goat enclosure, you have to eliminate three parts.
Just a little corner here.
No, other one. Right there, yep.
Here?
Yep.
No.
No, out to the road.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's a town right away.
Town, it's a town, piece of town. Yeah.
I meant the first written, a number of times, and that subject came up, this basically said, we don't need it. We're not gonna sell it, but we'll put an easement over, or we'll lease it. A dollar a year.
We need three. I think we need to see that easement letter in, in the packet.
Back to their condition.
Yeah.
An agreement to use as opposed to defining it as an easement or.
An agreement of use, could you guys get that done before our next meeting? What's that? Yes, yes, I know you're half, right, right. Um, okay. Uh, what other issues do we, are unresolved? For finding.
We did pretty much address everything from the last meeting, was this, I think. Of the civil engineering side, the architectural, architectural changes, landscaping was everything we're, we were asking about. Traffic stuff, I think there's still some stuff that, uh, just has to, has to address.
I mean, I think the line of sight, this is, do you guys think it's an important thing to wait on?
Well, the one thing to me, was the traffic engineer that we did so far. There was no issue with, it came up tonight, that all we wanna folk because of an accident. And there's accidents on every road we did.
Do you guys think? He looked at the entrance, he said the entrance is a better location across.
He agrees that having opposing.
Yeah.
Even though it's offset.
Yep, but he, that box didn't seem to bother.
It didn't seem to, no.
No.
Yeah, the only thing I had to, was just, okay, uh, just make sure the sightline visibility is.
Yeah.
It's acceptable. I mean, we can look at and say, uh, yeah, maybe, maybe it's gonna be okay. Can I ask Mr. Conrad a question?
Go ahead.
Jeff, uh. What are the economics of building a smaller project? Say, forty units. Is it impossible?
No. CDC would be better to ask that, we would, we'll be.
And, and it's too small because you can't, you can't cover the operating.
It's not just the operating.
I know.
Of affordable housing to Western Massachusetts, Morgan. And the more I hate to say this, but it seems like we wanted to build, just so extended by. The, the size seems to us, and even, financing with the state of Massachusetts. Somewhere in the sixty-plus or minus, a unit rate, that's what they'd like to see in a single.
A recent project. Fifty thousand, sixty-five units. And, uh. There's opportunity cost, these projects take a long time to excel, you have exposure needed for affordable housing. We, the way this is worked, with something like ten thousand units and virtues, if I get that out in thirty years, you met, so. It's a lot of units still, um. Fantastic project, fantastic site, and some plants, you're all. Excited with, it's a real asset, and I know it's scary, you're looking at something new, but I assure you. Maybe rush project. That's a lot of slam.
That's the last thing you get.
Slam, that's. And it's, it's places for. Real people to live. Places for students to live. People work at town hall. My job is to design, uh, living, I design houses for, um, second owners, and we need those too, as part of our. But we need places for people to live. We, but when you call an ambulance, you wanna see people show up, and you call the fire department, they need to show up, and they need places for teachers. Police officers, and carders, and plumbers to live, and that's. And we need a lot.
The other thing I'm trying to understand, is it's not something I did, that familiar dealings that. We need to develop affordable housing, there's not a lot of money to be made. There's a possibility that whoever's selling the land, may make some money. In this case, Eagle Mill. The developer's only entitled to a fee.
Yeah.
And I think it's capped at ten percent. Frequently, the financing entities will require a portion of that fee to be left as part of the equity. In the financing package for the development. So now what do you have left? You have some cash flow, you've got affordable houses, so you're capped at the rent you can charge. You're below market, that doesn't matter. And you're capped at what you can charge, so your cash flow, for the profit. After management fees, is not that great, and usually, as a developer. They get that money, if there's any money, only after their financing partner.
And operating building more efficient. So then the other thing is, you know, the developers, they set up, we made money. Or not the problem, that money goes back. We have a staff, a large one, to have to roll that money back.
Thank you. Do we want to vote tonight?
I think we got the information. Let's vote.
We got it here.
Ready to go. We can table it at some point. Why don't we start?
I don't think that's an option.
They want.
Yeah.
You want to do?
I think we.
Is everybody okay with what they got?
We've heard enough. Why?
I can't hear you.
No, you can vote.
Peg's not here.
He's not here.
You're sitting in peg's spot.
Right. You were, and you have been through this. In fact, if Peg was here tonight, she would not be voting. You would be.
Alright.
Because you heard the first section.
And if you're not here, we would need four positive.
Positive votes.
Yes.
Pass it.
So if you have five here, then you have a whole form.
Just hate to go long.
Yeah, I think we're there. Um, oh, we did site plan?
Oh.
I don't remember. Believe we did.
Did we approve the site plan? We, we said it was sufficient for review. I think.
Didn't review.
But we needed subject to.
We accepted it for review.
Okay.
Now we need to approve it.
Want me to go for it?
Yep.
For a major site plan approval.
Yep.
So my first motion, Mr. Chairman, is to accept the site plan as submitted in the application for special permit dated six twenty-three twenty-five. Uh. And I'm going to reserve further comments from special permit motions.
Okay. There a second?
I'll second.
Second. Going around the room. Conrad?
Hi.
Dan? No. Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Um, when do you want?
Motion passes.
Motion passes four to one.
For major site plan approval.
For site.
For site plan approval.
Yeah.
Alright, so I would move now that uh Sorry, you take me a minute.
Yeah, I had it right here too.
I had it.
Mark. Thirteen-four.
No, 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 it's, um thirteen point four. Oh, I don't think so.
You looking for the findings?
Yeah, the, the special findings in, in the, uh.
Oh, you want? Hmm.
Forty. Oh, here it is. Here it is. Thirteen point four.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's what she said. Okay, so be- before, uh, if the board decides to grant a special permit, we would have to make five specific findings. Um. And if we um, had any conditions that we wish to impose, um, we would impose them either at the end of the final vote, or we could do it as the conditions go by relevant to, you know, that condition. So the first finding is I move that the board find that the structure and use is in compliance with all provisions and requirements of this chapter and in harmony with its general intent and purpose. And I make that motion for a lot of reasons. Um. I'm a little troubled by the size of the project. I think as you come down the hill from Laurel Lake on Route twenty, coming into Lee, it's going to be big. It's going to be the centerpiece of what you see, I think. But I think the, uh, this, and the size is going to be a shock for the residential neighbors to have that many people in, in their neighborhood. Uh, but on the other hand, it is the downtown district. And it's a very underdeveloped portion of the downtown. And kind of a rundown one of town that needs more development. And this, I think this project would be significant benefit to the northern part of town. I appreciate very much the very dense landscaping effort and thoughtful landscaping efforts that were described here tonight. And I, I think that while the structure is big, I don't think monolithic is a fair characterization of it. I think that the architect has done a great deal to break up the planes, to incorporate details that reflect the historical nature of our downtown brick buildings that were largely constructed post-Civil War and that have a lot of detail that's being recapitulated here in this, in this design. And so I think the, uh, it is in alliance with, in all respects, as far as I can tell, with our bylaw, and I think that the effort to, um, to reduce the mass of the project by architectural detail, to reduce the four stories facing out on West Center Street to three with the, with the patio, the effort to tailor down, taper down the back end, the south end of the project, uh, in the vicinity of the existing residential housing, all of that, I think uh, is commendable and makes the word monolithic inappropriate, in my view. Um, I think the parking is in compliance, um, in the sense that the, the only question really is those few uh, compact car spots in the, in the turns. And as far as I can read our bylaw, the planning board is allowed to grant a waiver of those requirement, those normal requirements. So I think it is in compliance with the bylaw and in harmony with the general intent, purpose. That's my motion.
That's your motion.
Argument.
And your, and, and your reason, reasoning for finding.
Yes, which if it's seconded, other board members could supplement if they wished or argue.
There a second?
Yeah.
Any further discussion? Going around the room. Conrad?
Hi.
Dan?
No.
Dave?
Uh, as I vote tonight, I'm voting as a lifelong resident of Lee. And I'm, you, voting from my heart and my head. Uh, I truly feel that we need this project. We need more projects like it. I mean, we're, this is only number two of at least three that are going to happen shortly. Uh, so I'm going to say aye.
Peter?
Aye.
And reiterating what Dave said, I've lived not my whole life. Ninety-one, I moved here. Um, and we've watched a lot of different housing projects come through. Smaller ones than this, yes, but there was always gloom and doom with them, and they always have worked out fine. I am confident this one will also. Um, it's what the town needs. Housing. Um, it'll put more people in our town, yes. But that is also a benefit to our town. Um, for people to be able to live and work. My vote is aye.
Mm-hmm.
What do I? Yep. First condition, vote is four to one. Second condition.
I move that the structure and use is essential or desirable to the public convenience and welfare at the proposed location. I make this motion primarily because of the town's need and the region's need for housing. Um, I, I'm a little uncomfortable with the scale of this, but I can understand, having heard the explanations that a smaller project would be much more difficult economically to sustain. Uh, there are fixed costs in operating something like this, and you're operating on small margins, you have to have volume. So I'm not going to propose any sort of reduction in the size. Once again, I think that the, um, tapering of the building on the south end uh, is uh promoting the public convenience and necessity. Um, the parking is, uh, you know, arguably, uh, not sufficient, but it's very specifically established what the parking requirements are in the S G O D dis- district. And, uh, they, this project meets those requirements. And finally, um, this is the downtown district, and I have a lot of sympathy for the homeowners who are living in residences in those in those areas, and they certainly have a right to expectation of continuing quiet and peace. But it's the downtown area. It's not a residential area. It's, it's the zoning decision that the town made was that this can include a lot of things that are incompatible with the kind of residential uses that we heard here described tonight. So that's my reason for making the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Sir, a second?
One second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Conrad?
I'd like to say, I'd just like to say that, you know, the project is to promote affordable housing in town. And this is in accordance with the master plan that was recently adopted. And that was one of the prime things that was expressed. So this is a continuation of that effort. I vote aye.
Dan?
Is it my turn for a statement or?
You can. Anytime.
Well, so you, you know, I, uh, as a planning board member and, and living here my entire life, I totally support the town's commitment to affordable housing. And through thoughtful development, when it comes to this project, there's just a lot of things about it that, that, uh, I have concerns about. We still have the mill project across the street that's uh, not done, and, and we don't know what that will look like and what traffic will look like. You, you know, I know I, I mentioned traffic and, and there was an event that happened yesterday. But this side of town, as Jeff mentioned in the last meeting, it's kind of been under development for the last ten years. And someone who lives up the hill and comes down the hill every day, you know, uh, my son, who's ten now, has never seen that side of town not being under construction. And, uh, you know, I asked Jim if there were other spots the CDC looked at here in Lee. And you, you know, the, the, the answer was no. Um, it just seemed like this was the only spot that was available and made the most of it. Uh, I fully support the CDC, however, uh, I'm still a no.
Dave?
I'm in favor.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Uh, finding number two passes four to one. Moving on to finding three.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find that the structure and use will not be detrimental to adjacent uses or to the establishment or future character of the neighborhood. I, uh, I think the question of detrimental is a close one, but I think on balance, uh, the inconvenience to the present users is outweighed by the enormous benefit to the town at large and to the neighborhood uh, from having more this, this significant investment in housing, which is sorely needed. And it, I think it will change slightly the character of the neighborhood, but it's not in a harmful way, as I see it. The neighborhood is underinvested right now, in my opinion, and um, the bringing in of all these housing units will invigorate commercial activity. It will provide additional benefits to the town's school district for more students. Um, and I think it'll be, you know, I won't be surprised if five, five years after this place opens, if there are little convenience stores nearby so that people can walk to pick up a grocery or a you know, a bag of potato chips. So I think it'll be invigorating to the neighborhood, although it will certainly disrupt some existing patterns. That's my reasoning.
There a second?
I'll do it.
Dave?
Yep.
Seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none?
Well, I'd just like to say.
Nope.
Now, this is the existing Route twenty, West Center Street corridor. It's predominantly a commercial and now revived area that includes the Eagle Mill multifamily project, which is ongoing now. And that project has been transformed into, by a substantial investment in town. Also added, this application is now going to be another substantial investment in the area in a tune of close to forty million dollars. Um. I like to think there's going to be a sizable tax benefit to the town, real estate taxes that are going to be beneficial to the town as well. So I think the, uh, investment, the revitalized effort, increase of portable housing here is, is a substantial benefit. So I vote aye.
Dan?
No.
Dave?
Um, the only thing I have is Jeff we talked about earlier. I asked again, if to reach out to the neighbors and just see if you can live in harmony.
I will.
Okay, pretty sure. Alright, and I'll vote aye.
Louis is still my friend out there.
So I'm.
We're, we're gonna at the end, I think we'll do all of them. Peter? Buck Donovan, aye. Uh, finding number three passes four to one. Moving on, finding number four.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board find that there will not be undue traffic congestion or undue impairment to pedestrian safety. The, uh, traffic congestion issue involves both the entrance from West Center Street and the entrance and exit from Canal Street. Um, on the, uh, West Center Street portion, um, I'm uh, thinking of the finding that we heard earlier tonight with the recommendation that having an entrance across from the Eagle Mill directly is safer having it slightly offset. So I see no need for any further change there. And on the Canal Street part, I just, um, I don't want to recommend any gate. Uh, a gated gate would be problematic, I think, and it would, I, I, it would just be a bother to the residents of the, of the place, and I'm not sure that how it would work uh, or whether there would be safety issues. So I'm not recommending any gate. I think there will be um, there will be more traffic on Canal Street, undoubtedly, and the fact that there are long semi trucks delivering and picking up in the lumberyard out beyond the project. It's going to be a complication. It'll be, the trucks already interfere with one another occasionally. People coming and going on Canal Street will encounter those trucks. Uh, but I don't think that the, um, the risk is unreasonable, and so I recommend that we make this finding.
Thank you. There a second? We have a second now discussing, yep.
How, how would we even manage to mediate that? I mean, if they got a reason that that problem exists and then figure out how, I mean, the rules, it's only two lane, why? I mean.
It is.
Yeah.
Seems to me that traffic, oh, this, oh, this, oh. No, I, we're going to happen to pass into the bars that are very trapped, cause the increased traffic that actually likely increased stimulus fix off of canastries, so it'll be in better condition. And a pretty common philosophy is that uh, abandoned streets less safe, streets with a reasonable amount of activity are better.
Right.
I think to the extent that there's a problem, we should be talking dresser hall.
Well, I, I, I would guess with with more residents down there, Scott, I, I'm guess, I'm guessing we're going to see some improvements on that street. I'm, I'm hoping from the town. Um. You know, with, with, before it was just Dresser Hall. Now you have, you're going to have a lot of, you know, quite a few residents going to notice it. You know, same old thing, more people in an area, it's going to get fixed up. So that's.
I mean, I have a lot of straight posture and, and multiple times a week I submit it to one of my lot.
Oh, yeah.
Without me, like, dancing that lot, which would be, you're talking. Without me like dancing that lot, which would be a topic for a tractor that to then get into that vibe. Right, I can't see how you're going to keep people on whole or parking in any space that's cold. And then I'm not, again, I just, has anybody thought about how to fix this?
So these are the, yeah. The only the only thing I would say is that the state likes to see the town. Working with the developer. So I think that's all likely to follow and it's a natural course of the project. That if you're having people pushing illegally on the property, that I don't know.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
That's.
Thanks, Scott. Conrad?
Using in accordance with the traffic analysis that was done by Fust O'Neal. Two generation of two hundred trips in, two hundred trips out. Is considered minimal for this kind of development. Uh, the fact that you do have two driveways, not one. Uh, the majority access is going to be in and out of West Center, West Center Street driveway. But the idea that you have the ability to go out Canal Street is is good. The fact that you've got fire equipment that's got to get in and out of this place. The idea of putting a gate across there is not a good idea. Um, I think it's got to remain open. Um. Also might mention too, it's you were talking about number of parking spots. There is a bus coming all around the corner at the. At the mobile station. So I mean, it's going to be a certain amount of pedestrian. Activity from this development. For people going to the bus. Um, is that like the bus stop is some distance away? Uh, all in all, I I think under number four. I'm I'm a aye.
Thank you. Dan?
I I I guess when it comes to the traffic, I I just. You you know, wish there was a little more and kind of looking at the four seasons when Nick.
Couldn't hear you then, speak up.
Like the traffic study during all four seasons, we have four seasons here. Nick said they haven't even addressed the snow. So what happens? Where you have snow in the area, like, is it going to be? Uh, are there going to be banks there? Uh, you know, what happens if the wind? Is there going to be a snow drift? Like that, we don't know. Um, unless the traffic study is done, uh, during the season itself to kind of see where the snow piles up. Or where the leaves or where the junk is, or when the sun is setting. Uh, I can, you know, yesterday I was out. Uh, with my nephew and son, and I heard that car accident from a half mile away. And that was, I don't even know, I was assuming it was at Lucky's because you heard the crash. You heard the sirens, you heard the fire whistle, and the next thing you know, there were there, there was an accident there. So. There is concern and I come down that hill every day. Uh, and it's dangerous there, especially during the summer.
I'm not sure if there's an answer in there.
They're ready to bridge what you say.
I'm not sure where the accident was.
Just want to say about the snow. We have a plan for that. We just we just neglected to. Like, so we're happy to see that that night. It was sitting over site, something that I redlined for people, but I just. Just just. We do have a plan.
I'm not. So I have, no.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Um. Finding number four passes four to one.
Chairman, I move that the board find that the structure and use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal facility. To such an extent that the proposed use or existing use. In the immediate area or in any other area of the town will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting public health, safety, or general welfare. Um, I say this based in part on the on the civil engineering studies. That were discussed here tonight. And and also the the traffic issues. Um, and all of this seems to be well engineered and. Uh, I don't see any problem with it.
There a second?
Ken, one second.
Dave, seconds. Any discussion? Conrad?
Usually like to say that basically it is represented by the S K. Plans, uh. The civil engineering side of it. That, uh, there's discussion about the water systems, sewer systems. The infiltration system for keeping strong water pretty much onsite recharge. Um, you know. It's represented that what's being proposed for the lot of impervious area is going to be, uh. Acceptable. By the design, so should be no problem with that as far as overloading any of these services. Um, I know we didn't talk much about the. Schools. Um, if there's children here, there's going to be a certain impact on schools, but it sounds like. Our schools population, we're dropping. We're dropping. So there is capacity at our school systems. I'm not even sure that's up to us. Probably not even our area, but just looking at. The impacts of, uh. This is not going to overload our school system or be, uh, detrimental to that. Because there is capacity in the existing school system. So all in all, as far as utilities and the like. Um. Aye.
Dan?
No.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, aye. Now we'll get on to conditions. Um. I have a short list here.
What's that?
Mean answer.
Oh, yes, um, sorry. Condition number five passes four to one. Or yes, finding number five, sorry, passes four to one. Um, conditions. We need. An agreement of use. With the town.
An easement letter.
Um, I don't think easement is the word we want to use. Just an agreement of use of property, property with the town.
In some legal form. Recordable form.
In in legal form. Yep.
And recordable.
Yep, so that's finding one. Um, condition one.
Jesus.
Uh, enhanced crosswalk.
Well, I don't know if we can really make them do it. It's towns.
We can make them do it.
Make them pay for.
Enhanced crosswalk.
And what do we mean by that?
I think it's a pretty. Is that a generic?
Could we all work with town?
Sure. Yes. Condition would be work with the town. Yep. Whichever one we want.
Then I have, you know, the sure there's one page description of how that's cost work is.
Basically, yes.
What you do is drive down Main Street.
Yeah, we already have most of them.
You have a civil engineer.
Yep. Uh, landscape maintenance inspection. How often?
Periodic, every two.
Two years, every two years.
Well, what do we do if they haven't maintained? What is our authority to insist upon anything?
You can bond it, but.
Yeah, we can, our enforcement officer may be in in violation of the special permit.
I mean, it's not our interest.
No, it's not, but you you just never know.
Yeah.
You know, you.
What about a condition that just says that they will maintain? The plantings and landscaping and substantial. Compliance with the plan. And then we can go up anytime we want to walk around and.
We just get hurt a minute if they're, you know.
That's fine.
To me, it's the first year. I mean, if the plant survives the. Replanting. Uh, then it could go one year and then two years.
This next one is something I have, but I'd like to discuss it, and if we don't put it in the condition, we don't have to.
Um. Sorry, can you just reset for the record what the third condition is?
Third condition would be. Um. Landscape will be maintained as presented.
Substantial compliance.
Substantial compliance. As presented it. Permit.
Do we want to see a maintenance? Plan program?
I don't think so.
Is that necessary?
Um, so your your housing is going to be one hundred percent affordable. You said no section eight percentage of section eight.
I don't think he says no section eight. You have to have five percent.
Okay.
Section.
Yeah, I would be really hesitant about. That.
I just want to try.
Because we have a. We have a very complicated spreadsheet that we're always tweaking to make the numbers work and be a. A bunch of others across with the state and and we need to bring. Partners in for different areas of states.
Okay, here here's my concern, and I've seen it happen in Pittsfield. Where you're the. You are running it now.
Yeah.
Okay, another agency takes it over.
Yeah.
It is. The affordable housing, which we all are in favor of. Doesn't fill as well, but section eight housing will fill. And we s- and I've seen it go to all section eight versus portable. And your whole demographic changes, your whole community changes. How do we, how do we? I I know, I know. But it's the concern here. We're we're planning here. We, this is our community.
Yeah.
Okay? Um, the minimum.
You said.
Minimum of state level, minimum of section eight.
As required by the state.
Required by the state.
And if and if there are any proposed changes, it needs to come back to the lady.
He's giving me that look.
Cause she's she's. Of that aspect, right? Like, I'm I'm a journalist. He's my expert, right?
Yeah. Is she?
If I can try to call her and get her to.
Um, well, let's let's let let me get a, uh. Let me get the temperature of the board first, if we would be in favor of this or not. This is something I'm just throwing out there now.
How about this item specific?
This item specifically.
Can you say more about what you've seen, but and why why it matters?
What happens? The. The demographic and the atmosphere. Of affordable housing is a lot different than section eight housing. Okay.
And we want which.
We want, we we are. And we in favor of affordable because it promotes its workforce housing. Yeah.
But section eight is not workforce.
No, not normally. It is all. It's hundred percent subsidized.
Yeah. So dropped it down.
It's a different different demographic.
So you're proposing that there be a maximum of section eight?
No. I'm not, he's saying it up, but I wouldn't even.
I I'm saying that they they. I'm suggesting that they maintain to the minimum required by the state.
That's their maximum.
Would be their maximum would be the state's minimum.
Yeah, I don't think.
Okay.
Really think we need.
We we could.
No, I'm not holding it up for that.
Get her on a ball.
Okay, I'm doing my best.
We're trying to get her.
Yeah.
What about? Is it not a condition?
That it will be part of it.
Yeah.
Okay, let's.
Why don't you make it? Maybe speaking against our interest, why don't you make that condition? And it becomes a problem, come back to me.
Well, I I I want the board to be in consensus also, and if they're not, then we won't mess with it. Yep.
I think it's important. She she's.
Was that your receptionist that picked up the phone? Sounds like a little kid. Uh. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So the question has come up about what level of section eight or spreadsheet is based on and what. Yeah, there, there. So she's saying that it's it's a nuanced question because. At eighty percent AMI, everybody's eligible. But there's no requirement for it. So.
No.
So then there's. At a federal level, there's eight units, then at a state level, there's eighteen, so sixteen units.
Sixteen?
Sixteen. I know, we're almost there.
Yeah, she's she's trying to rejoice.
I'll be right, I'm right.
So I got you on speaker now.
Okay. Uh, we'll do.
What is, what is the question exactly?
The question is, I if I could summarize is there's some concern about the general demeanor. Of of affordable housing projects depending on the level of section eight vouchers that are used to cover the rental. So that.
Yep.
So my my suggestion was that, um, that's. You know, we're playing with our spreadsheet constantly to make it work and that we're, you know, working with a lot of different. Entities within the state. Um. To get this project funded and that I'm hesitant to make a condition. Of approval. Uh, specifying a particular number or limit to section eight. So right now it sounds like we're at about. Twenty percent.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three percent. And, I mean, are we comfortable limiting that number?
Um. So the eligibility for, yeah, for federal section eight is up to eighty percent of the AMI. I'll mention that there's like strict fair housing requirements. Surrounding anything having to do with section eight. Um, I'm, uh, I mean, it's never been my experience that there's been any particular, like, if you're saying that there's particular demeanor or behavioral issues, like, that's a. Kind of a problematic fair housing related thing that I don't really. Know that I can speak to right now, or, you know, the incomes, again, the incomes of our. Of the housing here that we're talking about are between thirty percent and eighty percent of the area median income. Um, we're tapping out, so the project based section eight program gives the subsidy essentially directly to the developers, so. Um, you cap out at a certain amount in order to not trigger prevailing wage, but it helps the developer with their cash flow. Um, so everybody who lives there would technically qualify for section eight because of the, you know, even workforce from sixty percent to eighty percent. Would would technically, uh, be eligible for a federal voucher. Now, what state require, you know, sometimes they're competitive vouchers, so. Uh, I I'm getting really into the weeds here, but, um. I would just, I'm not sure. Whether the concern about specifically section eight, like, is gonna.
So can I can I summarize your point, Diana? You tell me if I get it right. Diana's saying that this is a very complex and nuanced issue. That runs a serious risk of running afoul of fair housing law. And she thinks that it may be better not wade into in this venue. Is that correct, Diana?
Uh, uh, yeah, I would say, I would say that. I think, I feel like the 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 opinion about. People who are section eight eligible is is is, yeah, it's, um.
Is what?
It is potentially, I I think you're saying it's potentially a foul of fair housing. Uh.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Diana?
Diana.
Diana, this is Peter Blum. Uh. If I did a survey of housing projects, affordable housing projects, and I went to. A typical one that was. Twenty percent section eight. And I went to another one that was ninety percent section eight, would I be likely to see any sociological differences or impacts on the community that are different?
Maybe an easier question. Diana, you looked at our spreadsheet for for um, for Windrush, right?
I, yes.
Are you aware of the section eight? Levels there?
Um, not offhand, um, and again, like.
Okay, that's that's fair.
Everybody that income qualifies into this building or any affordable housing building that when you say quote unquote affordable. Low incomes, eighty percent of the area median income, very and extremely low income, it's like thirty percent of the area median income. Any one of those people could technically qualify for a section eight voucher. So any and all affordable housing. Any one of those people could technically qualify for a section eight voucher, so any and all affordable housing um, until you get up into like the middle income range, like all, all of those people, like, technically would qualify for a federal hu- hu- um, income, a section eight income voucher.
So, so maybe to answer Peter's question, you would say that the typical affordable housing project has a lot of section eight eligible people.
Yeah, yeah, they're all saying, I, 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 yeah, certainly, I don't. Um, it. Section eight just tends to be the um, the affordable housing program that I think people hear about the most. Um, but, uh. You know, yeah, I don't know, no, I guess to, to answer your question, like, I don't expect that there would be a difference in a, you know.
Follow up question, Diana, if a person reaches the upper income limit for section eight eligibility. Uh, and they surpass that income limit, they get more income than they're allowed to under section eight. Could they, under other arrangements, live in this project? Not as a section eight person?
Yeah, it'd be affordable then.
That's, that's the affordable.
No, I mean, uh, everybody, at, at every, every, every rent up and, you know, re-rental of a unit in this, in this building, um. Uh. They're gonna get income qualified, and people that earn between thirty percent and eighty percent, depending on the unit and depending on, you know, yeah, they're, they're gonna it's gonna be the same. Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I don't.
Sing it, everybody that.
There are people who are eligible only for non-section eight affordable housing, is that right? There are some people, yeah.
That's, she's saying that's more middle income, and that's not what this building is about, this building is workforce.
So they would not be in this building.
Setting, our, our, our income limits are thirty to eighty percent is what you just recited, right?
Yeah, and the building will have. Uh, we're going to apply for eight project based section eight vouchers, but anybody with section eight could come to any rental unit in Lee, and the landlord of that unit, as long as the unit was priced at a, you know, a, a rent that, that the voucher could cover, would, you know, have to rent it to a person who applied to the unit, whether.
Because of fair housing, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
So, is, I think I understand that the income limits for everything are thirty percent of average AGI, eighty percent of average AGI.
AMI.
AMI, right, right, average median income, thank you. Uh, is that, if you're in that thirty or eighty percent range, you might be section eight, you might not be section eight. And you, but you.
We don't get.
There's nobody, there's nobody who's outside that band who's gonna live here, is that right? Outside that thirty to eighty percent band is gonna live here.
Well, upon re-rental, like, so.
What?
So when you move in, you'll be within that income range, once you live there, you know, you're not gonna get kicked out, but, um, you know, if your rent, if your rent goes, I mean, sorry, if your income goes above that, now.
So, so, but, it seems like.
I don't think we can do it.
It seems like there's nothing, there's no point to it, really, it's just a matter of whether it's plan A or plan B, fine. But Brooke wants to say something, oh.
Yes, Kathy.
We're still here. This, I know, this has been wonderful, but after three hours, I need to say bye, and thank you so much for continuing the conversation, thank you. Good night.
All right, thanks, Kathy.
Good night.
Can I?
Okay.
You good here?
Yeah, we're good there.
Thank you, Diana, have a good night.
We're gonna, we're gonna not include that, but we will include a uh. Winter snow removal plan.
You gonna list what I've got, or do you want?
Yeah. Or, maybe Brooke should. She, she, um.
So, I've moved that the board approved a special permit. Conditions. As described in the filing of six twenty-three twenty-five. Subject to the following conditions about to be described by Brooke. I don't even know if that's a lie.
Just like a deer in a headlights.
That's my pound of shine, and here we go, so an agreement of use with the town in legal form.
For the, for the driveway part.
Fifty foot.
Yeah.
Fifty foot.
Fifty foot.
Space, the trees.
Property of all Canal Street.
Yes.
What, how should we describe what, what?
It's, it's the only town property, so it doesn't matter.
For the, for the town property.
To work, second condition, work with the town to develop enhanced crosswalk. And then I still do not, that cannot have. Their conditions specifically, but essentially, the landscape will continuously be maintained as presented.
Substantial compliance, Brooke.
With substantial compliance.
And a snow removal plan will be filed.
Now, this will be ongoing.
You know, I think.
Yes, well, I'll give you, it's not gonna snow as much. I hope.
This is within a month?
Within a month, yeah.
What the agreement is.
There's just one, one last thing, just. At the last meeting, we talked about those twelve parking spots across the street. It was part of the plans, part of the application, that Eagle Mill would provide twelve parking spaces across the street, primarily for commercial activity. Um. It's stated in the plans, stated in the application. We need to make that a condition. That those will be provided over on Eagle Mill property.
I don't think we can hold them for that. But that's not that property.
You can buy either. As long as Eagle Mill agrees to it. I'm just funny.
Yeah.
Is that important? I mean, it seems like they've met the parking requirements.
I think.
Which more does, according to zoning, what the applicant did offer those four spots across the street, primarily for the commercial units, uh, on the other side, so. I mean, is the commercial part of it gonna adversely affect the parking ratios for wrestling residential use? There, and should this be? Since it would be offered, should we make it a condition of that? Just a question.
And I, I think that's up to the Eagle Mill, that would be part of their condition. They have already gone.
Well, they've offered it.
Yeah. They offered it, fine.
No, I just.
Yeah.
And then what mechanism would be in place, or do we not need a mechanism?
Twelve, twelve extra spots in, in the Eagle Mill area will be maintained.
Twelve extra spots for only the deal with commercial.
For commercial, yes, yeah.
That's understood.
For, for commercial use will be maintained.
With access to twelve.
Access to twelve, sorry.
Through today.
Yeah. Doing, doing commercial offering.
Okay.
Fair enough.
Yep.
Did you get it, Brooke, or do you need to say?
Access to twelve extra spots for commercial use during the day.
During commercial hours.
During. What you have.
Would cross the street on the Eagle Mill property. It'd be assigned by Jeff Cohen.
No.
So access to twelve extra spots for commercial use during commercial out across the street at the Eagle Mill property.
Yep. You can decide that anywhere you want.
Yep.
For commercial use.
Four more.
Great, any other conditions anyone can think of?
Ready to vote.
Okay.
You want me to vote first, gonna change the order?
No, you have your mo- we, actually, that's the motion with conditions.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need a second.
I'll second, but discussion.
Whatever, I'll second.
We have voted essentially four to one on the five tests on the special permit.
On the five findings.
That is done on the findings. This is now a condition.
It's now to approve the special into.
Move the total.
With conditions.
With conditions, yep.
All right.
We have a motion and a second.
Ethan?
Dave second?
Hi.
Dan?
No.
Dave?
Hi.
Peter?
Hi.
Buck Donovan, hi. Special permit passes four to one.
Thank you, Jeff.
They're all on their feet.
Thank you. Stick to what you believe, though.
Our plan, you cut your disc, you're starting to get the closer.
It's not good. No, it's, hey, I, uh, I support everything the CDC does. I just wish it was someone else, yeah. All I can.
We get a motion, we guys.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, all in favor, aye.
Thank you, guys.